I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. As everybody had a chance to review the agenda, if you have any complex questions, otherwise we'll consider the agenda approved. And ready, have the reading of the minutes, please.
February thirteenth, twenty twenty four, the board of supervisors met at nine A M. with Gene Hyden, Chair of audit. Members present Schultz, Dozart, Hyden, and Mulbauer. A member absent was Rossberg. Minutes of the previous meeting read and approved on motion, the board recognized claims for public health and approved claims for all other departments. The board approved clerk of court fees for January twenty twenty four. Motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Dozart to approve the contract bonds and certificate of insurance for project V R S County twenty four, one thirty one sixty twenty four, concrete box culvert on County Road E sixteen with Dixon Construction company in the amount of eight hundred seventy four thousand, one hundred twenty eight dollars and six cents, motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Mulbauer to approve the twenty twenty four dust control applicator agreement with Heffron Services, Inc. Motion passed unanimously. Discussion was made by the board to set time date for public hearing on the land rent for the county Crawford County Farm. No action was taken at this time. Nate Deasy with Juvenile Court Services discussed with the board about having an internship program for his department. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Mulbauer to approve the appointment of Bethany Lincoln Hooker as Charter Road Township Clerk to fill a vacancy until the next eligible election. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Dozart, seconded by Schultz to approve the appointment of Peggy Sue Pynchon as Charter Road Township Trustee to fill a vacancy until the next eligible election. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozart to approve the Frontier Communications of America month-to-month contract starting March twenty four, twenty twenty four. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Dozart to approve signing the novation agreement to transfer N O A A lease from the Crawford County Firefighters Association to Crawford County. Motion passed unanimously. The board approved the treasurer's semi-annual report, July one twenty three through December thirty one twenty three. On motion duly seconded and forwarded adjourned at eleven eleven A M. Agendas for the next meeting are posted and available to courthouse on Friday, four thirty P M preceding the next meeting.
Alright, everybody. Okay, what had any additions or corrections? Looks good, sounds good. Alrighty. Alrighty, so. We had a lot going on this week. Who wants to go first?
I can be a short sweet.
Let's do us quick and then we so we can hear.
Alright, here we go.
We'll do us three in five minutes on YouTube and pass the time.
Alright, short and sweet. Here we go.
We did joke about it at the conference or convention the other day about Ty and Gene or space fillers.
I said, we'll we'll go over our time and when I got and did my part, time's up and I still have a ways to go.
Well, I ran home real quick and just set something to him because I had.
That's fine.
And I appreciated it just.
What do you got, Kyle?
I'm gonna write keep it rolling.
I Friday meeting up at Cherokee, paved the roads. They were quite pressure to get there, but ours weren't. Ours were in good shape. Crawford County's was. We hit Ida County and there was pure ice, so. Kudos that. But the highlight of that meeting is we had our, I will stamp this and send it around. The audit came back, this is supplement the findings. Nothing, nothing out of the ordinary. Seducation of duties. Like any small is the problem. The fund balance showed a low, but reflected the fact that the B I A, the Bureau of Indian Affairs hadn't paid us for quite a while. So, I mean, our cash payment was like twenty thousand dollars, which is pretty low.
They're typically slow to pay.
But they've since caught up, so the next one will show that. So that's really the only thing that no others had to say. So passing around, she stamped this, people sign it. And other than that, it seemed pretty quiet up there. As far as no riots or breakout attempts or anything like that.
That's good. Very good.
And then like we did discuss, I'll take this up to tire lumber today and see if we can get a best of others cost or whatever to do to put them all, you know, and insulated.
Maybe we should get the whole diagram of that whole basement because while they're there, I'd like them to go ahead and do the small things that might be needed in the.
If you can get me that, what your plans are.
I probably do.
I know I have it at home, but I didn't drag it.
I said Louise is pushing this because tire lumber's dad is he wants to get moved over there in a worse way.
She said one of the veterans came in the other day and they're like, when are we gonna get over there? This this sidewalk has to get to him. So it's now that we know.
Which also.
Thank you, Kyle.
They asked Louise, yeah. She wants to move the van someplace else again, another handicap spot.
She talked to me about it. It wouldn't be a problem.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Kyle. Great.
We just had an I T meeting that I did last week. It was a lot of, to me, high-tech stuff, hard to understand. In that meeting, Terry was there too. Just some terminologies that I'm not, I'm not used to. But if you guys have anything that you wanted to add.
Anything. We're on track to switch phones over.
Right, I worked one second.
Yeah, so that we'll get a terminate one we're in and get into the new one. Talk a little bit about cybersecurity training. The new tool he brought out was that auditing plus, which seems very, very in-depth.
Yeah.
Monitoring and it sounds like it's pretty vital to our security, cybersecurity. It will have a cost to it. The cost was.
What did we end up doing? A three-year or a, I can't remember.
I can't remember what we decided because it was nine thousand for perpetual, thirty-two hundred annually. And if you did the nine thousand, it's fifteen hundred a year for maintenance.
After that.
After that.
I don't remember what we.
I don't remember what we, I wrote down those numbers, but I don't think I wrote down what we decided.
But what it does is it helps with our cybersecurity and looks at who's logging in and when and where and when every time you have a change in password, I mean, it really gets it to get.
Yep.
It does get a lot of.
And they said that. We agreed that if we were going to go into it full-time and have it year after year, it's better to spend the money upfront than try it for three grand a year for three years.
And he had something, he had it in his budget. I think we went to the perpetual.
I think we did.
And we added to the amendment. I think we did. Because I, if I would look at my spreadsheet, I've got that all started and I think I added that to his area.
I mean, he said this tool was vital for for them. If there's something that they hadn't had, you know, ten years ago, I said, what were they had? He said, we didn't have that. There was nothing like this. And you know, do you think that moving forward, this will be it won't be, if we do a perpetual thing where there'll be new and improved competitor three years from now, that he's pretty confident that this is the company.
Part of the agreement that could come with that.
Right, right. So I believe that you were right. We did the perpetual and he budgeted the thirty-two hundred.
I kind of remember coming back to my desk and adding it on so I wouldn't forget.
Because Dave's right is that if you keep it long-term, it's best to do the perpetual upfront, pay the money. Be less overall costs for the taxpayers doing it that way.
And it can help, I guess, find your response or you're supposed to identify for cybersecurity reasons, you know, potential threats.
Yeah.
So it's gonna kind of analyze your system.
I mean, he popped right up and it showed all users and how many times they logged in and.
The key to this door is kind of getting wore out. I should replace this key.
Yeah, right. And maybe they're in places they shouldn't be kind of stuff, right?
They'll hang the key for the door right by the door.
Right. Or the combination to the door right by the door. Yeah, yeah.
No, no, that's fine.
But the tool, I mean, it's kind of amazing that it keeps track of every individual user. How many times you opened up your outlook, how many times you visited a website, how many times you did whatever. It's.
Well, it helps.
It's also a resource of management tool for elected officials as well. You got somebody that you know is you can pull it up and say, what it does, you're on Amazon twenty-seven time.
They're gonna be on their phone for that though.
Well, I'm assuming they would be, but I mean, it'd have to be a resource. I'm gonna lower your basketball ball.
I'm gonna send you guys.
No, that's all, sounds good. I mean.
And it wasn't horrible expensive either. Not like some of those can be, you know, it's big, not a big upfront cost and then the perpetual costs are inexpensive.
If I remember right, the fifteen hundred after you got into perpetual agreement wasn't.
For the maintenance.
For the maintenance. You didn't necessarily have to do every year.
Right.
Right. But you were still into that perpetual contract.
Right. And that's what we kind of talked to Jake about was that maybe if we get into it, maybe you can skip a year of maintenance. As long as there's not that many updates, but like David mentioned, I think at the meeting, but just so that you get to, maybe they won't allow you to do these updates because you did do them that year. You didn't pay.
Details type of thing. You don't want to
Right.
skip a year and then say, oh, well, now you're two thousand a year.
Yeah, right.
To catch up or whatever.
Throw it out over the years. If you skip a year, you're still gonna pay. Yeah, those are the doubles and the detail kind of things. So I just sent Kyle the R F P that Jacob sent me for his room. So if you wanted to take that into consideration, talking.
And all in all, I think the meeting was fairly smooth and.
And it's a book, Kyle. Yeah, quite detailed, so.
Very good this year.
That's it.
I'm just gonna say to Terry, I will sit in on the policy department.
Okay, just you?
Well, unless somebody else wants to sit with.
We just would like to keep it to two so we don't have to, it doesn't have to be an open meeting.
And if somebody else wants to join, that's something I can easy run into town.
I just need a couple of dates that work best for you.
Easier to say what dates don't work. Wouldn't, wouldn't, really, wouldn't you guys want to meet?
We typically meet in the morning.
I'm available early in the morning is fine.
Oh, I can't remember.
I'd be out of town that week of March third. That week is only one to stay away from. But next week I'm available, maybe right before this meeting.
Okay, and then we'll get you the info for things that we've discussed already on some updates and changes and stuff.
So I just wanted to let Terry know.
Yeah, thank you.
So, alright, Dave.
Okay, besides I T meeting, I had region twelve. Here is our audit for the Council of Government Housing Incorporated. Pretty much business as usual, usual. We threw and I can show you guys can look through this later, but nothing really outside of normal report, pretty business as standard. We had our executive report. Transfer report, local assistance report. Carla Janney with housing. We actually had housing and the executive committee together. Carla was there with the housing part of it and said, if there are any communities looking, they have that dilapidated home program where they'll come in and fix up a home or if they can get it, like they had a home given to them. And what happens? They come in and fix it up and put it back on the market. Or if there's communities I know are like, the city owns a home, they'll either sell it to the region twelve, they can fix it up and then get it back. You know, either owning or renting out or they flip those homes. Within, it has to be within reason, you know, you're trying to get them back on the market. But it's something I, you know, she just said, reach out to your communities, you know, if you talk to Pam.
Is there a fee that they have to pay to to be part of that because they know that the other?
No, I don't think so. I think it's, because they get them to, there's different options of what they can do with these homes. But if you have an abandoned home that's not too far gone, they can come in and have funds to help revitalize it. Which is really good. Just trying to get them back up and go.
To where you're done.
Yeah, please have a reach out to Carla. And I can't get into much detail, but we did have, talked a little bit about our meat and poultry loan fund. Our big amount of, what was it, eleven million we gave to West Number D. It's kind of on hold right now and to let the cat on the bay, but there's some things that they have to come up with to comply with the agreement. Are being helped a little bit through the system. And we have some different options to address that later, but it's just on on hold for now till we get some things squared away. Nothing to be too concerned about. We have options to work, work with it or work around it. So.
Yeah.
As far as that goes, it's. Oh, yeah. Okay, my pen's ready. Let's go.
Can we just make copies of that and I'll.
It really, you know, when I went up there, I went up with some talking points and cybersecurity, since you brought it up, this is one of the talking points. Was one of the talking points that I actually brought up. And there actually is a lot of work on that. And there's monies out there for cybersecurity. Problem in Iowa is it gets held up with the state. So I actually made suggestions to the cybersecurity. I'm bringing that up first because you guys were just talking about to work more on money directly to the counties, to the local government. I said, because, you know, while we may not feel we're at risk as bad, I suspect the counties, you know, in the larger urban areas, you know, Miami Dade, for instance, or some of them other ones, even the bulk, they probably are susceptible, you know, and there's nothing that says that we're not.
You're in the argument stage about that with some people in and out. Say us rural counties, smaller counties are probably, in my eyes, more susceptible.
Because we don't appear to be ready.
And we, you know, Miami Dade, they'll have staff of people working on it.
Good point.
And I always said.
We're lucky to have one.
You know, yeah, I mean, we're very vulnerable out here for anything as far as cybersecurity terrorists. I mean, I would say stuff that's going through my head, but I don't want to give anybody idea. This is like, as a past fire, gee, I'm like, we are so susceptible to any attack.
Yeah, and that was kind of brought up, you know, I mean, it's like your your point that we just don't have the funds and the resources that the big counties do. I mean, they might be a more appealing target because there's more monies in that county. We're an easier target and most criminal types like to just scoop off a little bit at a time.
So what what you said was you said there's cybersecurity funding out there, but it's it's gets tied up at the state level here. So is the is the federal, this is federal money, I'm assuming. So is it federal money that they want to get to the counties or do they just give it to the states and then the states do with it whatever they want? Because there's no avenue for us to apply to the state to try to get some, right? There's not.
Yeah, that's that's kind of how I, how I took it. I mean, that. I'm trying to remember even which section I was in.
I wonder if that's same funds because ISAC was supposed to get them.
Yeah.
You can chunk for cybersecurity to come up with a format for all counties to follow.
Right, but don't they work with O C I O?
And O C I O had changed. They have a new name now. And part of that funds were supposed to go to ISAC. But then I think the director, I remember, seemed very.
He's got a rural economic.
Wanted to give it to Iowa State.
I'll start cruising through this and maybe I'll.
I know we have some free programs that are available through what used to be known as the O C I O. And, you know, we've taken advantage of them as a county. Crawford has, and I feel like a lot of other counties have too because with elections, we have used some of the Foxfire things and I feel like that has changed to something else now.
O C I O changed names. That was the original agreement. ISAC, you can have this chunk of money to help develop cybersecurity and keep going with that. But then they changed names and they want to give it to a chunk to Iowa State. And then they came back, well, maybe you can do it, but we want you to do cities and schools as well.
Right, and ISAC's not associated with that.
That's where I think I got these talking points to bring up when I was up there. And, you know, they get the monies more direct to the counties, you know, or local, even the city.
I have a question, Ty. How how long are they gonna just keep it tied up, you know, federal, state, we're all talking about?
Well, it's a lot of times it's state stuff where they're, you know, I mean, they're re just, you know, I don't even know.
Hell, I don't even know.
There's no mechanism in place such as the Federal Highway Administration to farm the market money. That's got channels, it's got to go. This just comes from the state. Gets to the state and the state's like.
So how do we loosen it up?
They might just spend it on.
How you make it available?
They get a bill.
We're sitting here talking about how at risk we are and then you bring out that the federal.
The money's out there, but there's money.
That's the point I was trying to make, that it's just.
Maybe there just needs to be a mechanism.
Billions of dollars in the bank just talking about that.
Level on how that gets followed along.
Well, that's, that was, that was, that was what I kind of brought up. I mean, maybe you guys dedicate this goes to your state and then you use it how you need if it needs to assist other counties, but.
Kind of like bridge funding or farm the market funding is.
But you know, most of the time it's a matter of the state making, just like they did with the engineers on how to actually distribute our monies for the road use, like you said. You know, I mean, I think that that's probably why things, you know, they they come up with some way, oh, we need cybersecurity. Here, throw this money out of state. Well, you don't have that mechanism you're talking about, so they gotta create it, you know, and well, we all know how fast government operates. So in any event, I'll I'll just start here at the top and maybe I'll get to where I talked to somebody. One of my, the Saturday was our steering conferences or our steering committee meetings and I I'm on ag this year, obviously, as I've pointed out before. And the first speaker we had was from the U S D A and she's actually the Deputy Under Secretary of the Farm Production and Conservation. So she hit on some topics that were pretty close to home for me. You know, we kept talking about water resources and all kinds of stuff. So, I mean, Gloria Mon, crucify, Monteno, Montero? No, that's not right. So anyway, she said, it's like Montana, so and then green. But anyway, very, very, I like them that can get up there and just talk right off the cuff. They're not reading a bunch of prepared notes because it tells me they're into their job, you know, I mean, really, she was a very sharp lady. And she started just talking about, you know, like first she got right into infrastructure plan. There's actually one billion dollars out there for watershed. It works through N R C S. And actually, we're already working with them on our little project. So, I mean, these are some of the actual monies that we're probably already digging into.
I would imagine Rory with, as I was talking with Luke Gilmore about, they are actually working on a plan to feel like low head wears in the buoys to slow the water down so it fills the wells. I hope this will be part of.
Yeah, that's all part of what we've been working on. They've been working on that primarily, but I mean, as part of our watershed protection.
Need some beavers out there.
I got some.
I even asked her, I said, I don't know how you do it out there because the ground's so unstable. You know, because they actually brought up the Ogallala Aquifer. And I said, you know, it'd be nice if you guys would do kind of like what you did with the water water conservation here in Iowa where we put all these little dams for little cattle ponds, as we call them. You know, you can do that out in in the sand hills of Nebraska. That's actually where the primary feed is for the Ogallala Aquifer is the sand hills. So if they could do ways to hold water back out there a little bit, that would fill that aquifer, which, I don't know if you've ever seen a picture of the Ogallala Aquifer. That sucker is huge up and it actually goes up in under South Dakota and everything. And it goes clear down into Texas. It is big. And if that thing grows up, we'll all be in a bit of trouble.
It's on a round seed.
Yeah, that's what it is. You're right. In any event, so she talked a little bit about those monies and stuff like that. So and like I said, we'd already, I already wrote down, no, we are actually working with them. So, I mean, that's we're we're on track there already. Inflation Reduction Act, she talked about some monies on that. Money for hurting farmers, let's see, twenty-two zero zero six. I don't remember if that was a senate or a house, but I think it was senate.
Did that pass? I didn't think Inflation Reduction Act.
Yeah, she was just talking about things that were gonna be in it.
I don't know, maybe it's the worst.
But money for hurting farmers and that would help them pay bills and make payments on stuff. So there's some monies in there for that stuff.
Hurting or hurting?
Hurting, hurt.
Okay. What farmer?
Yeah, but there's, there was supposed to be three billion in that just for farmers, you know, and she brought that up for, since it was ag related. Anyway, there's a nineteen point five billion in the conservation program. And once again, that gets into stuff that we can use for our water and and because and I just brought it up. I said, so what would be a priority for that? I said, what if we're working on projects in our county that would be but would be no less important to flood mitigation than they are for water reserves? And she said, that's exactly what we're looking for. So I'm like, hearing that. We got projects for you. So, so anyway, see, and and it actually came out and it said, you know, conservation stuff, they're wanting to actually have some financial support for more of the conservation stuff where you guys go out there and do cover crops, you know, and and different things, the no-till and erosion control thing. There's, etc., buffer, yeah. So there there's some money and that's nineteen five point five billion on that. So that that might go a little ways. Risk, risk management for drought storms. And that's when I actually raised a man, asked a question about the, you know, what kind of a project would be a priority? And, you know, then I already said, I asked her about the man-made lakes or, you know, just hold back water for a little longer to sink in because that's all sand out there for the most part. God, you think that'd sink in pretty quick out there? I mean, I don't know how you'd get that to hold. You don't have soil to bring in.
Maybe it's down to the aquifer.
Yeah, just something to hold to get into that aquifer, a little bit more to get into that. I just, I brought that up. She just, she raised her eyebrow and was listening. So apparently it was, it was registering. At least that's how I took that look.
You know the love.
Anyway, urban agriculture, that was something that I found pretty interesting when she went into that. She was talking, this was more about like, you know, people that are, you know, got a little acreage as, you know, around the edge of town, but also even in town, doing more about promoting gardening and tough stuff like that. But then in the urban agriculture, like if you got an acreage and you want to get into farming programs, you know, to do vegetable gardens, to work in the farm to markets and creating more wholesome food supplies for your local community, you know, I mean, we're probably fortunate out here in the Midwest because we still got a lot of gardeners and stuff, but you get around the rural areas. I mean, you drive around like Miamis and stuff like that, unless you get over by Fort Meyer where there's a lot of produce being raised. Sometimes there's not a lot of farm markets or farmers markets, especially in the lower income communities, you know, and and, you know, having more healthy food available to to farm farmers markets, but also to restaurants. And having more availability to them, you know, yes, the other day, yesterday I was down in Omaha and where I had my dry cleaning done, I was sampling things, trying to help the rental boys find the dry cleaner. But I stopped at a little place called Good Looking and it was just a little restaurant right in front, but it was all like fresh and healthy. Instead of a cheese, now they had burgers, but, you know, instead of that, it had good options. And I actually had for the first time avocado toast.
Ooh, that's good.
And it was very good, you know. Kinda messy, but it was good. So I mean, little things like that, I mean, obviously we're not growing avocados around here, but you know, just more things that create. And I and I and that what what that sent my mind to is, you know, our our health rating in in Crawford County being so poor, you know, more things like that sure aren't gonna be harmful, they're gonna be helpful for it. So I, I mean, and that's just how I was looking at it and, you know, even like Omaha or something that may, and I I think they probably have a pretty good array of farmers markets, cause there's a lot of local, small acreage.
So there's money out there to encourage that or?
Yeah, actually, they're they're working on that.
They're working on that.
Yep, and that's part of the, that's now that's in the farm bill. Remember that, as long as we're working on continuing resolutions, we're still working on the last farm bill. It's this new farm bill that'll have these new programs on it. So that's why they're talking, I'm I'm gonna get to some other things, I'll even annoy you a little bit more. Uh, anyway, they, uh, three hundred million set aside in there for beginning farmers inflation reduction programs. And and I was trying to keep up with her on all this, you know, I mean, I was looking to see if any of that was gonna help like with input costs and stuff like that for these beginning farmers. But a lot of it was to help reduce the cost of insurances and stuff like that and things that'll help them be sustainable, you know, and things that they gotta have and and actually.
Be as simple as a beginning farmer getting a cheaper rate for crop insurance.
Yeah, that's exactly what it was about, you know. So different things like that, and it, I mean, so they're working on some things to help in that angle, you know.
And you know, you knock out fifty or a hundred bucks an acre.
Fifty or a hundred bucks an acre, I mean, that's that's that's, every dime helps, as we all know, you know, I mean, so they were, they're working on some things on like that. I mean, number of the things she really talked about was the crop insurances and stuff like that, helping with that, cause obviously they need that even more than than a sustained farmer that's got a sizable bank account, you know, that can maybe survive a bad year or two or three. And a young farmer can't survive a year of bad. He's gotta have them insurances or she's gotta have them insurances or they're toast after their first year if you get hailed out or something, you know. So I mean, that to me really made a lot of sense and I was kinda glad to hear some of those things. Illinois brought up, they asked her about this and I wrote it down because we're hearing some about it. They're losing a ton of ground and it's down, it's always their nice flat ground that they're losing. And then and she actually addressed this, this Ms. Green, she 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 addressed this. Uh, they're losing a bunch of ground to solar. I mean, you know, where there, it's a whole section disappearing.
Is it being eliminated by eminent domain or is it landowners?
No, it's landowners that are going going to it, you know, and but the problem is, is, you know, it's years that it's out of production, you know, and a lot of these landowners are people that, you know, that you're Bill Gates that go out there and buy this prime farm ground. And then they put this in there, so they're absentee landowners and that's another thing that makes it harder for your beginning farmer to acquire some land. I mean, I was really impressed, I will say this about this lady, I was very impressed about how she kept refocusing on the next generation of farmers. I mean, that really, she talked about that on, I mean, every now and then, you know, we'd be on a subject, but she'd bring, this is something else that we have to work on to help our next generation of farmers. Or it'll get harder for them, you know.
That's such a fine line to walk too, because you wanna protect property rights and have them be able to sell their land for solar if they so choose.
Yeah.
But yet, when you have a big entity come in and start buying up the ground that locals or the average person can't compete with, it's such a.
Well, and her comment, her comment to this was to find ways to to install these types of devices that don't use up that prime farmer. You know, or they don't, you know, cause if Bill Gates can come in, he can pay twenty thousand for an acre that we're spending nine on.
Or even have a China come in and buy ground. Where do you draw that line of property ownership, maybe in a country or, yeah, those state stops are supposed to.
And he kept coming to my mind, cause I'd heard where he'd buy a ton of ground in Arizona. Well, there's sunshine most of the time, so that's actually a lot, as long as you ain't hurting their cactuses, cause I think they, I think that's the death penalty in Arizona, yeah, that's what them cactuses. But as long as you aren't messing with them, I mean, you got sunshine all the time. Build it, I mean, you could put, you could take care of Vegas and LA with a solar field out there in Arizona and you increase the value of both places, you know. But anyway, that was just an issue that she brought up and I actually said, I actually even asked the question, like, we got a lot of terraces in Iowa and there's a lot of them face to the south. You know, why couldn't they work on some, you know, developing technology or just along the top of a terrace? I mean, you'd have to worry about terraces washing out yet, but you know, I mean, just follow a terrace line with solar, you know, and if they got it in the right position, it wouldn't hurt the crop behind it or ahead of it, you know, and you might be able to get multiple crops, so to speak, off of your property. See where I'm going with that? You know, and I brought them kinda things up and she said, that's an interesting concept. So apparently I was a novel at least twice through the conference. Who's this guy with all the goofy questions, right?
Guy from Iowa.
Yeah, you know what, I'm always trying to think outside the box. Uh, CRP Transition Program for helping beginning farmers, you know, I mean, to make it easier to come out of CRP if somebody wants to start farming a family ground that's in CRP or something like that, you know what I'm saying? Or even ground that they could purchase from someone else because of a death or something. So they're working on some different things there. And then education resources for the for the early farmers, you know, which I think we probably got a fair amount of that already.
Oh, I think there's always could be a need for some more, you know, think back to like after World War Two, right, Korea, Vietnam, they had this, these classes for farmers at the local community college or at the high schools where at night they would go in and take these farming classes or whatever, you know.
Sure.
Record keeping and that stuff is still.
And the new tech.
Really no resources for a young, I mean, unless you got, your dad has some sort of.
Well, and they brought up about.
There's always room for more stuff, but you know, record keeping moving forward, bookkeeping is gonna be the key to success or failure on that, cause a lot of profit margins are slim and bottom lines.
And they and they did bring up about training more farmers on tech and I'll get to that, cause I think that's in my rural development part here, but. Well, it was a busy week.
About technology and farming, my grandpa McCollum said, they planted with a team of horses for years and when they sent a bunch of tractor and a planter, his dad did one round and said, I'm done. That planter behind me just don't feel right, you're young buck, you take over new technology. That was a technology switch.
Okay, National Institute Funding of Agriculture, that was that education. So I mean, it's, there is an institute that's working on things to help with, especially with the tech aspect. Uh, Farmer to Food Bank, they were talking about more stuff there, like Farmer Straight to Food Bank, and I think that's gonna be more of the Truck Farm or Meat Farmer. You know, to be able to help move meat to the food banks, you know, different angles there, you know, where you could do something like run through a locker and then go to the food bank or something. Yeah, work with that. Anyway, rural healthcare, obviously that's a concern of ours in Crawford County. Um, they said that, uh, there was two different statistics that got thrown at me through this about hospitals closing. But I think this was a pretty accurate one. Since two thousand and ten, there's been a hundred and forty eight rural hospitals, you know, like ours that have closed. And then a lot of times those are out in real urban areas where now you're now you're over a hundred or plus miles away from any kinda medical help at all, you know. So, I mean, it really increased the problem exponentially for some of them, you know, you get out in Montana, Wyoming, even out into the mountain country, you know, I mean, further out towards the coast, I mean. So anyway, that was a, that was a real issue and the government is, let's see, government paying.
You know what's sad about that, Ty? I'm sorry you interrupted.
No, go ahead.
You know, Manning Regional Healthcare, the program, you know, we're short funded through the Medicaid care organizations. Let's say if we're only paid seventy, seventy-five percent, they're having a federal subsidy program to subsidize the shortfall that the MCOs are giving us at the rural healthcare. And it's like if they just paid their, straight what the cost was, now we're using federal taxpayer dollars to offset the shortfall that the MCOs are making in profit.
I don't even go into the next part, Dave covered it very well, they actually talked about that.
Set a whole section aside for.
Yeah.
Makes no sense.
And and the lack of inpatient beds, they're trying to do, but even like with them small ones, they wanted to try to find a way to stimulate some help, you know, uh, some help to them. Some of them old hospitals reinvigorating them to just do it for, you know, be emergency room as supposed, and then have transport. And there was a lot of talk about air air ambulances, I shouldn't say a lot, there was a couple sessions where they talked in depth about like protecting our air and our ambulance fleets, our ground ambulance and then air ambulance fleets. Especially in them rural areas, air ambulances are gonna be important. And then the little gal that I met from Alaska, she said, well, I'm fine in my part of Alaska, cause she said we're in the tropics. Okay, so I thought, okay, I'll find the door. But long did you know that little finger down there, there is actually a lot of, that's actually kinda probably nicer weather than we have in the winter, it sounded. But, you know, when they get up into the upper parts of Alaska, there's people up there that if you don't have your own bandage, you're gonna bleed to death, you know, I mean, they're just, they're just too far away from anything.
There's parts in Nebraska, it's a bit different.
So I mean, there was a, there was a lot of talk about, you know, things that we're gonna have to do, they 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 know that they're they're way behind the curve on figuring stuff out, I shouldn't say way behind, but they're on figuring out some of the ways to deal with this stuff, you know, and, you know, where the monies are gonna come from. Well, you know, spend a little bit less overseas, we can make you take care of a little more here at home. Anyway, rural community opioid response program, they're trying to put seven hundred and fifty to a million in that, uh, per year, which would be, it's a five years, it's a farm build a five year program, right, yeah. Anyway, uh.
Depending what they said today, technically five.
Five, technically, there was a good point, technically it's five until they start hitting CRs, right? Anyway, then we talked about rural EMS and the and the guy that spoke on that, who's an old army medic, uh, you know, a couple combat tours over yonder, and then he was really good information. Gosh, this guy was sharp and he went to college back here, you know, got up on all this stuff and he was the one that was talking about air ambulances and and different things like that. Very, very interesting to listen to him, uh, but they've got different bills that they're trying to run through that this, him and his organization are actually trying to, uh, perpetuate, I suspect would be a good word. Sixteen, Senate File sixteen seventy-three, protecting air ambulance services and, uh, For Americans Act will update current, it will update the current legislation that actually runs out in two thousand and twenty-eight. And so, or two thousand and twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-four, and they're they're working on the legislation for two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty, it'll be the next three years. And then protecting ground ambulance legislation, their Senate File sixteen seventy-three, as I mentioned, but then there's also House, a House File that's already started sixteen sixty-six. And they're they're working to actually expand, ex- expand care out here in some of these rural areas. And I I don't think we're in jeopardy yet and I'm I'm still interested to see how it would work out with the hospital if we would act, but put a new tax in to take care of our EMS. How's that gonna affect our tax dollars to the hospital for their ambulance service we currently got? And then will we be expected by, for all of Crawford County to be taken care of by volunteers? And if that's the case, guys, get ready for our budget to go up, cause we're gonna end up with a damn hospital or ambulance service right here. That's that's a concern of mine. I mean, when we just had three now, there may be, there's two good ones, but.
Hospital current levies for that now, do you know what that levy rate is?
Uh, they, their levy generates around three to four hundred dollars.
I think it's three plus.
Just for ambulance, yeah, and that's, I think it's just.
And then they dump another six in with it. The hospital itself dumps another six.
It's not paid for.
Yeah, it's six plus that she says she, that come out of their their monies, their earned monies, not tax money.
But that money, you also gotta remember that money is probably generated from their billing for services for the ambulance.
Sure, right. But I'm just saying, I mean, all those monies is, I would hate to see all the monies disappear because we got a tax now for EMS and then we only have three volunteers. I mean, so that's why I said, I believe, I hope they're working a lot closer than I am. Now, they really appeared to be working pretty good together last one, so, but I do know that Aaron had made a comment about that, so, well, then we probably won't have a service. And then I, you know, then we'd have to have a housing, I said, well, is your housing still available if they would do this? She said, well, temporarily, until we figure out how we're gonna expand. So anyway, just think about that as this goes forward, because I sure as heck wasn't the last meeting. Uh, Siren Reauthorization, that's training for substance abuse. I was a bill. Mass reimbursement. Okay, they also got the the Senate Bills thirty-two six thirty-six for on scene, you know, the Tims and, or what is it, Tims and Tams, you know, where you know, transport. Yeah, yep, so there there there's actually working on some funding for for the taking care of that, so hopefully that'll all come around. Let's see, uh. Farm Bill's priorities, and this was, you know, I heard, keep fire, keep, keep farmers farming, keep families fed and keep rural communities thriving. So I mean, that's, they they were talking about different things, you know, like our rural ag communities, which basically is what we are, you know, so. They know that the importance of that to help and keep our farmers surviving. And I will tell you, whenever you think we're paying too much for a cheeseburger in any one of our restaurants, we are nuts. Cities damn sure are, no, it's like, I just buy, take out a loan to stay, to keep eating out there in Washington.
Wow.
It was crazy.
Twenty-five bucks for a burger?
Oh, just nuts, I went down.
Is that about right?
Yeah, yeah, well, the dinner, you know, I mean, a dinner burger, I mean, but it's fifteen dollars, eighteen dollars for just the burger, just to have a burger with no fries.
Sure.
I went down there that first night, I got in and I said, you know, they had the little pizzas. I seen a lady with, eating one at her table, I'll just have one little pizza and a, and a drink. Forty dollars later, I was still hungry, so anyway, there we go. It was pretty expensive there, drink was fifteen dollars, so that was a good way to get over any drinking problems you might have, just move to DC, you will quit drinking. Or you'll be forced to, cause you can't afford to drink. Anyway, uh. Uh, resources for voluntary conservation programs, then we already talked about that. Um, let's see, I mean, I just, just a recap of what we had, I'm gonna sort through this to see if I, just repeating, small community tele, oh, this was a good one, I really like. Small community telemedics, like Charter Oak, we had, we used to have that over, you know, our little doctor's office there. If you still had that, set up a little telemedicine, or we could even do it in our city halls, like what, what Louise is gonna be putting in her office over there for the vets to be able to telemed with the hospital in Des Moines or Omaha. You know, you could put these up in our small communities and it sounds like there might actually be some potential for funding for that down the river. So I thought that was real interesting, because then, you know, somebody's having some issues or something, instead of having to go clear to wherever, I mean, for us, we still got, you know, our hospital's close, but there's other communities that they aren't, you know, I mean, you're fifty, hundred miles from the closest hospital, but if you had this telemedicine centers, I mean, they could at least get in front of a doctor, here's my stuff. And if there is somebody there that's, you know, able to take vitals and stuff like that and help that doctor out, so, I mean, you wouldn't be able to do labs or anything like that at someplace like this, but, you know, it might be all you need for a cold, you know. So anyway, with some interesting stuff that way, uh, that was a, that was a good point I wanted to bring home, so the guys keep that in mind. I mean, even even if ours, you know, for older folks, you know, that are just feeling a little rundown that day, you know, they need to get a prescription renewed, something like that, be able to get in front of a doctor that easy, that'd be pretty nice. Capacity ability to go out. Rural water, rural water, we went over rural housing. Uh, they did, they were some different things they wanna put in, cause they're 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 wanting to do in the farm bill more than just farm stuff, I mean, supporting our rural communities as well, which won't hinder SNAP or farming subsidies or, you know, I shouldn't say, I don't like the word subsidies, because it's, you know, it sounds like they're giving you charity, but it's things that they restrict you from doing that they're actually compensating for. You know, whether it's through conservation programs or whatever. But, you know, they they wanted to talk about like improving the multipurpose housing and and, you know, I seen it on that street down there, but that dry cleaner is down there where I was at in Omaha yesterday. Where they got the the old fashioned way that we used to do it, where it's business downstairs in the house and then the rest of the house is family occupied, you know, occupants. And that one down there is like a, you know, remote, or it's a access to fresh foods, you know, it was a, it was a, it was a little grocery store, but it was, I can't remember the name of it, but it, it was right across the street. And then the next place over was all fresh baked breads and stuff, so like a little bakery and what have you. So I'd do doing different things like that is what they wanted to talk about doing, so. And broadband deserts, we talked broadband, the deserts, where there was a lot of talk about that, you know, I told them about when I'm coming up through Kansas, a lot of times there's, between Wichita and Liberal, there's like a thirty mile stretch at the bottom of Kansas that's almost all the way across through there. You drive up through there, we're not getting any signal on our phones and I got Verizon, so if I'm having that much trouble on my phone, I have to ask myself, what kinda internet service are they getting on the farms out there? And then this is actually holding back. I'm trying to get to that point where that she talked about in the rural development. How many, what's the percentage of farmers that you think are doing precision farming?
Oh, it'll get more every day, but it's probably a low number, you know, on the grand scheme of things, I mean, here again, we're the anomaly here in western Iowa. I mean, here again, we're the anomaly here in Western Iowa. You can't take what happened to Crawford County.
I guess how do they define it?
I'm gonna say twenty-five percent.
What are they defining?
Well, you know, like the seed, the fertilizers and, and, you know, I, I haven't.
I mean, as far as probably even if you just have auto steer or something, one tractor, so I mean, almost that twenty-five percent.
You missed it by one percent. Twenty-six percent of American farmers are using precision farming. That's it. So you think, you think of the untapped potential that is still left in America, you know, if you start doing these prop, you know, if you start enabling people to be able to use it, and I mean, it isn't nothing to walk through or to be driving through southern Kansas and, and old forty-twenty still out there pulling the planter. I mean, you know, that's what you're using for auger tractors up here now, you know, I mean. Too small. There you go, too small for an auger tractor. Won't run that twelve inch auger anymore, will it?
Do you look at what precision farming, how more, how much more efficient it makes us? I mean, just in seed usage, chemical usage.
Fuel usage, I mean, where, there are hours amassed on your equipment, you know, just no tail stuff.
But it comes with the cost.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. But I mean, that was, that were some of the things that were really talked about, and that really got all the rural counties talking. You know, I, cause I, I think, it caught me off guard, that low. I mean, I would never guessed it was that low. It really was.
Did they have people guess it there? When people get close to the percent?
No, no, I did that for you guys.
Okay, I was just curious.
They didn't take a lot of time to do that. They, they were conveying a lot of messages. I mean, I, I'm bringing you the hit points that I thought were really.
I feel like a business opportunity for somebody to get into.
Ding ding ding.
Ding ding. Tie on that note, my wife was a pioneer, was an international pioneer, and tried to develop her sales. They would go into rural communities in those countries and say, instead of planting four foot wide gaps between your corn, get it down to
Oh, Ben's coming over.
Less, so we can produce more.
Is Ben coming?
Paul's gone, so I wonder if Ben's not coming.
Well, we got it set aside.
Okay, well, and I got, the only other one that I really, I mean, the Rural Action Caucus, you know, that's farming stuff. A lot of that stuff's actually uh on the farm bill yet, but I mean, they did talk about different things, veterans' transportation and stuff like that, the BEAT program. Uh, the forty-two point four or five billion that's out there and working to get to the right places.
Did you say billion?
Yep. It's in the, well, that's. Yeah, it was billion. Yeah, I got a B wrote down there, so I'd written it down as I said it.
Make sure we all heard that, right?
Yeah.
Billion.
Yep.
How did um?
Across the whole country, though.
How many people from Iowa do you think went and Alice the group and they take care of you pretty good out there?
Yeah, it was actually really, really good out there. It was a, I will say, and don't take this wrong, to get better balance on NACO, there needs to be more conservative people going.
Which we talked about in one of the ISAC meetings, you know, your voice heard.
Yeah, and, and you know, it, it wasn't that, you know, it's just some of the different programs that a conservative voice tends to talk about ahead of, of, you know, the other, the other side. I don't know, I mean, it's the opposition, because it ain't, we're all on the same damn team. But you know, you're, you're just different priorities. And uh, so I, I think those are the things that uh, but I brought up, well, you know, the hard part is, is most of, most of your conservative voice comes from the rural areas. I mean, the thing was, is it really wasn't, cause you're concerned. Don't take offense to that, but you are. But uh, I mean, you uh, when you look at the cities, that's where all the people are coming from. I guess it's because their budgets can afford to send more people. I mean, because they'll be, the whole, the whole stinking board. I talked to one county, there's, they got what they call an administrator, and he's like a mayor for the county. They got seventeen commissioners. There's seventeen of us sitting at that table.
Oh, my God.
And I asked that guy, how many of your commissioners are here? He said, well, there's only five of us. I'm five of us, I'm all bored.
How do you take minutes for that?
What state was that from? What state was that from?
I, I, I think he was, don't quote me, but I think that one might have been in New York.
New York, okay.
It might have been in New York.
Be like going to the conference.
Might, and I remember right, that was a county right around Surry.
Okay.
But anyway, uh, uh, it was, it was really, the rack was actually a lot about that, those type of things, you know, I mean, getting, getting.
How many days are we actually there?
Well, I Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday were four full, I mean, full days. I didn't get done any night before ten.
Wow.
And I, I'd get up and take my shower probably about four thirty or five, you know.
Wow, big days.
Cause there would be little breakfast seminars where they'd serve you rolls and stuff, but you know, then they'd talk about programs or something. So I mean, it was constant. I mean, you know, and we didn't have to leave the hotel a lot, thankfully, because, you know, even transportation. And the last day, on Wednesday, supposedly Uber was gonna go, Uber and Lyft are gonna go on strike. But you know, the, actually, the taxis are cheaper than Uber out there. So I took taxi. Let's see, let, let me get back here. I, the one I really wanna talk about, because I got a meeting, I'm gonna go in June. I mean, even if I gotta put part of it to have myself.
Ben has nothing, so.
It's, it, internationally, it has nothing. International Economic Development. You think you're done, right? I'm just getting started. International Economic Development, this guy that's actually this, he's on, he's a, his, his jo- job is probably like CDC, what Paul does for us. And uh, but he's for Erie, Pennsylvania. And the first time he went to this, he said, I was just absolutely blown away. He said, all this stuff that's going on there, he said, it was overwhelming. But he's an old, he was an old army guy, and he was, he was in infantry, and he actually had a recon. He said, so I just started laying up, seeing, I was preparing how to attack, you know, assault, assault my objectives. And uh, he said, I seen that one place that I could probably interact with the most people was between where the, all the booths were set up in the bathroom. He said, you can't believe how many contacts I made in that hallway, he said, you know. But anyway, that was how he got us started, but then he started talking about all the things and, and, and the, I mean, tons of millions of dollars that he's already generated for his, for Erie, Pennsylvania through, through going just to this Summit USA. And he had people that were actually from the Department of Commerce and stuff there speaking and what have you. Uh, hands-on trainings, they're gonna have that in our, in our Zoom meetings in the next, no, probably well before June for all of us that are on this commission. And uh, anyway, uh, I'm not gonna get this guy's name right. He's, he was Indian, so it's Gassit, Gasteet, Sing. Anyway, he was one who was with the Department of Commerce, very, very sharp fellow. He's got ten years in, in managing foreign investment, and, and in them ten years, and this was, I think last year they brought in foreign investment into the United States alone, and last year was ninety-eight billion dollar. So, I mean, and that's companies that are looking for, to put their new business. Uh, he said, usually stick with what your culture is. He said, that's a kind of a good point of attack, you know, as far as, like, we've got a lot of German, Irish, and Hispanic, you know. He said, and don't look at, and don't forget to look at Canada and Mexico, they're foreign to us, that's foreign investment. But he said, make sure you're always looking close to home, too, instead of just always what's way across the ocean. But he said, like, you know, in the Midwest, a lot of German economies, and Germany's always looking to expand into America for obvious reasons, there's large markets over here. But you know, you have a lot more in common for them, so like a small, he said, cause I brought up, I said, I hear you talking about a lot of stuff that's helping the cities. I said, my, uh, my county isn't as big as some of your suburbs, you know, so I mean, I wanna know what this is gonna do for me if I invest in it. You know, if I come out here, what's it gonna do for seventeen thousand people in Crawford County? He says, there's a lot of them places over there that are looking more for a spot to set up and help stimulate growth and be able to grow things that would be, you know, like depending, that would go towards what their industry is, you know, I mean, be able to train workforce off of that. And he's, he said, what they're gonna be asking you is what kind of workforce training programs, what is your geography, what is, you know, all the things that we have available to them, whether it's for tax breaks, all these guys. He, he gave a list here.
So how do you find them?
Huh?
How do you find them?
Find them.
The companies that.
Well, they're, they're gonna be at this summit. There's gonna be people wandering around looking. He said, now there's tire kickers. He says, he says, if, if you're in your sales, you understand what a tire kicker is versus somebody that's looking serious. He said, so you gotta sort your way through them so they don't take up too much of your time, because you're only here three days, he said.
So that's something our uh, CDC, CDC should be at.
Yeah, I, I think so. I mean, it's just a matter of them being able to afford to go.
Maybe could they go through Western Iowa Advantage, DC?
Well, it's, here's the thing, is I've already got Rachel asking whoever, she's supposedly getting me in contact. Iowa sends a delegation out there, but now, just, just like always, what is Iowa's delegation gonna focus on?
Des Moines.
Des Moines, Iowa City, Cedar Falls.
Are they all from Eastern Iowa in the corridor?
Which makes the more.
I am the only supervisor from the state of Iowa on this task force.
Wow.
The only other person on there, and it's kinda, I mean, I'm not gonna say that you, I obviously consider us a community, but it was an auditor on there, too. I mean, it's good, I'll try to see if I can find her. You probably know her. But, but uh, I mean, I just thought that it was a kind of an advantage, at least on the government aspect of it, is hey, you know, I've got the inside track of a NACO team working with me to help us. You know, where there's, I mean, otherwise, this whole task force, I mean, it was only, I don't know, seventy-five names on that list that I got. And that's from all over the country. So I mean, I think we might have a little bit of an advantage there. We'll see. I mean, you know, it's like he said, you don't have any idea what you're gonna run into the first time. He said, he said, but he said, I'll be able to help you guys make plans. And they, and somebody asked him, why would you wanna help everybody with your secrets? He said, there's enough business in this world to go around. He says, I'm here to build the American team. I said, you should probably run for office. Anyway, uh.
But you know, that makes it all that more important for someone from the rural area, Iowa would have our voice heard, otherwise we don't.
Yeah.
And then it does just end up in the.
Well, and you know, you don't know what you'll stumble into. I mean, that's the biggest thing, is most of my best business deals were because I was just listening, eavesdropping on the right conversation at the right time, you know? Am I, am I using up too much time here?
You know, it's really important what you bring back, and I think it's, I almost wanna say an honor that you go and bring all of this information back and give those, you know, your notes are excellent. I personally appreciate it, so I think it's interesting. I don't know.
Well, I, no, there's nothing, I haven't been interested about it, but maybe you have to spoon feed it to us in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, maybe.
And I, because I wanna hear all of it.
Yeah, I mean, we can do more, I mean, I, I went over the ag pretty good, you know, I, I, you know, and obviously, that's real important to this company, you know, so that's why I started with that, but that was also the first meeting of the, of the conference for, for me. At steering group, but I mean, we also had, I'll, I'll go back to ag just a little bit more for your benefit. Uh, the morning I started out with the Iowa delegation, and I went to both of our senators and then Feinters, and then I broke off with them after that. Uh, we're just meet with staffers typically. And I think NACO, in particular, even I- ISACS, they believe we get more done with the staffers, because we can, we, we can all go talk to our elected officials back here. But it's in Washington staffers that are actually the ones that are helping coordinate, organize, and keep reminding the official of what's important, you know, to what, what's been brought to their attention most and most. So that's why they like to actually just set up meetings directly with the head staffers. And I say, I say that because the Senate Ag Committee, when we sat down in there, uh, they did, I didn't go to that one, it was in the morning, and they, they had a pretty good conference, but they, they did more talking to the senator, the senator's staffs did more talking, but when we got into the House one, I went over to the NACO side, but, and, and when we had the House staff, I was there for that one, you know, and uh, boy, we really had a good meeting with them, you know, and I brought up a couple of different things for them. And uh, the one was the transportation, where they're wanting to pull that out of the bill, you know, what, being able to drive in interstate. And I explained what we're fighting out here in Iowa. How we've already got all our roads open up, but we can't use the interstate. But I also said, listen, just make this thing read so that states, if they don't wanna put heavier trucks on their highways, they have that option to decline doing it. But I think once they see that it doesn't do more damage to Iowa's roads, Missouri's roads, all these states that are already using the heavier weights, but we can't run on the interstate so we can expedite our animals to the farmer market, you know, and get them there more safely and efficiently. I said, I, I, I talked on that, and boy, then they were all just writing to beat the band and then had questions. And they, and I, I'm knowing this from past, if they're writing and asking questions, there's a good chance you'll get contacted back. And then that means they're actually, the wheels are rolling, and this is stuff they haven't been talking to about. So on that there alone, you know, it was, it was, it was pretty, pretty good. And then I also brought up, because we talked about it in the supervisors meeting here, I brought up the uh, oh, shoot, what do they call their drainage districts? And I started talking about how the federal fish and wildlife aren't paying their fair share in that, and because they call it a tax, but it ain't a tax. It's dues to help keep, take care of the infrastructure that's helping keep their land from turning into a swamp or, you know, all the, and I, I, and I said, and man, did them pencils get busy. I was really impressed with, they were all right, man, even the one guy that didn't typically write. And uh, they had some questions about that, and I told them, I said, I really can't answer this. We don't have a drainage district in my county. But I can tell you, our Iowans are really frustrated in the rural counties about this, you know, and I was thinking about Kyle, you know, because Kyle would really be. So I started giving out his name to everybody, and, and so hopefully that gets us some good action. But we really had some good meetings with them about getting the farm bill, and that's the ones that brought back, I think they got down to where there's really tw- working days to work on the farm bill out of the days that are left in the year, and where the committees get together and actually work on the, the stuff to get this farm, like twenty-two days. I mean, it was just kinda like, holy crap. In, in this, and now that's ends this, you know, September thirtieth or thirty, whatever, thirty-one days, no, thirty days. So I mean, there really isn't a lot of working days, but because it's an election year, the time's off that they afford to offer, you know. So I mean, we're really numbered on the number of days to, so I'm, I'm afraid that we might see more continuing resolutions, which is disappointing when you think, that wasn't something like you typically think about is, when they do a CR, it's off the last farm bill. It ain't off of this new one, so nothing new's getting implemented, it's the same stuff, you know. Anyway.
I'm gonna ask you a question real quick.
Okay.
How often do you think there's been an actual truck driver, somebody that's on the roads, doing the, the trucking on one of these committees, getting their input?
That was already talked about, actually out there. They said, well, you're the first trucker.
There we go. All right, I knew that one.
So yeah, no, you're right. And then the, an ag trucker, you know, I mean, they really, they really, that really spoke volumes to them, because they, they said, you know, we get to talk to a lot of farmers, and we get great input, and everybody's farm's area is different.
Yeah.
Which, you know, you don't get that voice of the person that actually connects them to every one of their markets. So, yeah, so actually, I have a lot of, thank you.
What we'll do is, you know, next week, if we don't have a lot of committees and whatnot, uh, just mark where you're at, and we'll uh, just continue on, because I think you, you spent all that time gathering all this valuable information. I would hate if you couldn't share it with us, because that's why we send you.
Sure.
So I appreciate that, but we're gonna go ahead and move on, and if we get to the end of the day, we'll, thank you very much.
Thanks for, I think, I think it's well, well worth it, especially when you consider that we gotta make sure not only our voices heard, but all our voices.
Good job, buddy.
I'll just briefly also just say that when you talked about the cybersecurity, I just looked at, they passed a bill in June of twenty twenty-three to provide three hundred and seventy-five billion dollars for all states. And so I just sent an email to Jake and said, hey, check this out, because uh, it was twenty-five percent, and each state is supposed to go towards rural part of that state. And I just said, hey, can you check this out? He already got back to me, and he just said, we had some discussion with the affiliate ICIT last year regarding this grant. And our tech services bureau chief along with ISAC tried to fight for it, but all got pushed to Iowa State University for their cybersecurity program.
Oh, my goodness.
And he goes back to Director Paulson.
Good job, Craig, see?
An Iowa State grad.
That is just absolutely.
So my point to push that past the state and down to rural is probably.
That's something.
Excellent.
All right.
We like to quickly research.
We love that. Everybody's got their role here, so mine is to keep it rolling. I keep, I write that up there every time. So on our agenda, uh, next is the discussion with Andrew Mitchell at the Dunlap Street, a short section of gravel going into Dunlap. So who is here to discuss that?
I don't think he's here.
I don't think so. We had that on last week, and then uh, I had gone out and uh, drove that section of gravel. And so I would be very interested to have Andrew come and kind of help, help us understand what the issue is on it.
At this point, we put him on the agenda twice, and he didn't show. I don't want to see him. So we're rolling on again.
I mean, it's, it's unfortunate to feel like he's been shorted. I mean, they're treating it like every other gravel road.
Absolutely.
Gets treated the same. I mean, it's not like they're, probably even a little better, because it is a higher volume traffic road, so.
Well, part of that issue is, is that mud that comes from the neighbor that is brought onto the road. And so, you know, a little gravel at the end of that would maybe help, but that would be up to the neighbor to do that, and so those are, it doesn't have to be known.
County, that's what happens in agricultural communities, and you try to be cautious of it.
And I think that they're very aware of that road, and I think they do a, a good job. We drove all through the county, and that road was uh, not any different worse. I was expecting quite a disaster from it, so we will just wait until we hear back from him. So we'll move on, uh, take action on the Department of Niche, the Township Trustee, Tony Lyle.
That's why Pat's here.
All right, Pat?
Yeah, while I was here, um, Charkonto, we had an unfortunate situation where we ended up with two vacancies on the township board. And we took care of one of them at the previous meeting I attended. For someone that was willing to serve on the township board, and we came up with a gentleman by the name of Tony Lyle. He will replace Lionel Miller, and we're asking for your approval for this allow to be on board.
So Tony would be, he'll do a good job. So it was good fine.
Yep. Good job. I'm glad I volunteered to do that. So we need a motion to approve that appointment. Second, give me a second.
Second.
Second. We need further discussion. If not, I'll call the roll. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion has been approved. Thank you for coming. Thank you very much. Good fine. Appreciate it. All right. Next item is discuss take action on the contract renewal for Paul Osmond's county engine. That was all in the packet. Did everybody have a chance to look at that over? For the discussion on that.
No, I don't think it's. Nothing in the packet about that. That goes back to.
Not his contract.
That was a landfill.
Oh, sorry.
Here's that.
So that goes back to Jean and I, we did sat down with Paul after we sat down with the admin group and kind of discussed where Paul was heading and what we were doing. And we looked at comparables and.
And all the benefit that he brings to our county with the grants that he brings in and all of the extra work that he does of our county.
And was kind of thrown out there that house three to be at a four and a half, it would put him at a hundred and fifty thousand. Granted, he won't be here a full year. Is his ending date. I do feel like if you look at his tenure, this time being Robert County, he put one heck of a stamp on improving our road systems. The amount of money he had brought in throughout the years, he put himself at the front of the trough and brought a lot of dollars back to Crawford County. And that is something that to me is this outstanding, not just one year of time, I mean, since two thousand one.
It's a long time.
Since we basically stuck with a dollar amount for all the other department heads, is there a reason why we don't stick with the same dollar?
You could do. No, it's comes down to four and a half would be, give him the hundred and fifty thousand would be a seven thousand dollar increase. Granted, it's not for a full year and then we'll be looking for a replacement eventually, but to me, it's kind of a thanking for the millions you have brought into the county. The recommendation. That's the recommendation.
I'm in the same boat as Craig. This year's been our most successful year of a dollar amount. I'm trying to keep that momentum going. I don't, no discredit anything that you said, it's just percentages, I just, we haven't went with a percentage yet this year. I just like.
All right, let's go down on.
For a department head.
Department head, elected officials came with a dollar amount.
Compensation board came with a dollar amount.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. What would you like that dollar?
You know, just needs to, I'd like to keep that going because it brings some sort of parity or true, true evidence.
Well, and I get that. I get that.
I mean, is that just discussion or is that?
It's take action. We need to, we need to come up with a contract for him anyway, so we can know where he's at for the fine. I just think or his, what he has put in throughout twenty-some years should be recognized. And there has been years when we've held him back.
Yep.
If it was something that was, you'd be here another ten years, I think we'd take that into account.
I mean, we certainly know that, or we don't know, what are the new engineers going to cost us?
Right.
We had a higher price now, though.
No, I think that would be renegotiated at the time when you.
Because you know, you don't even know what we're going to find for experience out there.
Exactly.
Unfortunately. I tried to steal Jefferson County or Green Counties engineer while I was in DC, but I didn't have any success.
Maybe, maybe not, maybe find someone younger that, you know, who's qualified, but yet starts back at eighty-nine, ninety, hundred, you know.
Winona County's been what, how long here without one?
Here's the thing you had to remember.
They're at a hundred and forty thousand and haven't got anybody to bite.
They haven't been able to do projects either grant stuff.
Yeah.
Because they don't have an engineer.
To that point.
Uh, that's not a bad positioning. I mean, I'm just saying.
He's at a starting wage than what Winona can't find.
He does a lot of extras too. It's one of the things, you know, that is it really, that he just.
Well, he's one of the only engineers, I mean, there's probably only a handful in the state that can actually do survey work.
Yeah.
You know, and that saved us money on the tower system. They did all the survey work for them.
Number one big thing, lots, lots of things.
The grand scheme of things, we get an engineer, the next one may not have all his certification.
That's exactly right.
Unfortunately, half of management staff might have to be let go because he covers, I mean, he signs off on a lot of their stuff right now. We'd have to go back to hiring Sunquist or whoever
Yeah.
to do this a lot of that stuff.
And that is.
Excellent point.
I guess where I'm at, and we could make this a motion if you guys willing and let it go where it goes, but one year contract, hundred fifty thousand.
One year meaning July to June?
Well, that's when his contract had expired.
Okay.
May June thirty.
Even though he's not planning on.
Well, when he, when he would retire, then it just ends.
Just have its official date yet.
That's why.
He hasn't turned in an official date yet, but it probably won't make it.
But that would be his one year contract. So you'd still get, you might not collect the whole thing because whenever he retires, it'd be done.
So it still might not be any more than we're paying right now, to be honest with you. In the end.
Right, right.
It'll help, it'll probably be a hyper boost, which is what everybody seems to be charging about at retirement time.
I understand that. To me, I guess I just think we should be consistent.
Yeah.
But across the whole board, you know, across everybody.
That's fine.
Does it start that not being consistent for the last year that other people are announcing, hey, this is my last year. What are you going to do for me? What am I? Give it all my years of service and all that I've done. Yeah, so is that like one forty-three dollar?
So what?
Two fifty, so it's about six thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Do we have a motion with the discussion take action item?
You two sat down with them and you guys, I don't want to, just when people go in and representing us, fine, right? I respect it. And this is something that you guys are bringing to us. And you brought a percentage. We're just asking to convert it to a dollar amount.
And everybody knows that we have to have the full.
For dollar. I mean, we do have a voice yet, but I still respect what you guys are saying. So.
Right.
It's hard to do them negotiations as is, you know.
Right.
I mean, because you're still trying to think about, and I'd like to think that you guys thought about what we would.
And I know what you mean. I mean, every time you start to adjust and here and there, you know, we are, have been pretty consistent with dollar amounts across the board. You do have to take into consideration his years and then what he's brought into the county.
Over the last six months, about four million dollars. On two bridges.
Considering it won't be a full year. Just all things to work.
Correct.
So I guess.
And with the you leave on a good note, or we end on a good note together, and we do struggle for a year or longer not finding a suitable replacement. Do you?
Which he did.
Branch to have him at least come back in and so we can still continue our bridge replacement project that we got scheduled for next summer.
Which he did say he'd be willing to do.
And then Winona County had pulled two jobs last year. They didn't have anybody that would.
He's not.
That's an excellent point.
Yeah, it is.
I think it's a first point.
And I think. I mean, I'd hate to see us not get grant money because we don't have anybody to even be part time.
Well, not even grant money, just the, the
Can't even do it.
What we approved last week of that bridge replacement project that if we don't have somebody, an engineer to sign off on it, the DOT is going to, well, we're not doing it.
That's right.
That dollar amount is very minor olive branch, but you're looking at a million dollar.
Right. What it says, six thousand, seven hundred fifty dollar rate.
That's an excellent point.
Right, that's.
It's up for discussion.
Did you make that motion?
Yes.
It's up for discussion.
I'll say it.
I'd put him at an even hundred and fifty.
All right.
Or a one year contract or until he retired.
We'll do a one year contract.
Yeah.
Make sure.
Just one year contract.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Now I'll call and vote. All in favor, aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. It's been approved. Thank you. That was a good discussion. Discussion take action collective bargaining agreement for its first two thousand point four, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven wage stipends and increase in fifty. All right.
This is a best, how much did it was, programming allowance? I guess I missed that.
We were at two hundred and one, two fifty.
Two fifty is what we did with secondary.
And we switched it for boots to.
This is landfill.
This is landfill.
And it's two fifty.
It is. Okay.
All right. They've always been pretty good in there in the secondary roads.
Yeah, they're out there in the elements and there's a lot of.
That was a three year deal, right?
Maybe some corrosives in.
Correct. Twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven.
Motion to approve. Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Want to oppose, same sign. Chair votes.
We, we skipped. Why'd you skip?
No, never mind, never mind.
I was thinking, I read us two different lines. I was thinking that we had the admin group in there as well.
Well.
They've already been taken care of. Oh, no, the, the union has, but not the, not the admin group.
Do we have them on here?
No. I was thinking that they were going to be on here as well.
Are we good with what we're?
Gotta make sure you got something to do next to it.
I'll add that.
Can't do it all. Watch your shake.
All right. Are we all clear on what we're?
Yep. Sorry.
No worries, no worries. It's good. All right. So everybody understand, we have a motion to approve?
We already voted.
We're voting.
Okay.
Yeah, we voted.
We have brain fog due to COVID nineteen.
I interrupted.
Yeah, it's okay.
Dave distracted her.
Yeah. It doesn't take much, trust me. Allow us for proper kind of landfill bargaining unit employees. I am the right spot.
That's a continuation of the line above.
Amy Piper.
Yeah, we're down to Amy.
That's where I read that same thing. And I was thinking that admin was in there as well.
Okay. All righty, discussion take action. Amy Piper, HR, certified local government annual report. You are on.
There she is.
So I'm wearing my historic preservation hat, not HR.
Looked like you got your monologue.
So this is the annual report that we have to give the state every year to make sure that we can still do grants, all of that good stuff. So, um, this is where I tell you all the wonderful things that we did last year. And we had another really good fair. Our fair booth was really successful. We had, our theme was aviation. It, you know, we love being able to talk to people, you know, answer questions, get, you know, the history out there. And so.
Learn just as much as you're given out.
Oh, yeah, for sure. So, you know, and it was great because we had one of the aviators that are in the hall of fame actually came to our booth. So that was really cool that he got to talk to people and, you know, ask question or answer questions, that kind of stuff. But the coolest part was, is Jack Aart, which is another aviator, came at the same time, didn't plan it. They both were there at the same time. And them two together was probably the coolest conversation, you know.
We get pilots together.
Yeah, and they were, you know, and they were both in awe of each other and it was, it was really cool. So, um, so the fair booth was a success.
I liked all the pictures that were flying on Facebook.
Yes.
Everybody flying.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, we always have to have our little photo booth, you know, and and that's always like, get people to come in and, yeah. We haven't had a theme, we haven't figured out a theme this year. So we're.
I was just thinking, what would be a unique?
Well, we're taught, we're thinking like sports. Like a sport, you know.
Yeah, every town have their own mall club back.
Yeah, like baseball.
State JC's clubs and stuff. That was good.
And there was, so one of the Dow boys was like in the Olympics for baseball, I think. So, yeah. So sports could be, we're not sure though.
Definitely.
And then we're still working on getting Percy Schofield's headstone. We're really hoping to have that for the big, huge Dow House celebration in June. And we did not get another calendar out this year because our in-house photographer had a lot of other stuff going on in his life. Like switching jobs, starting a paper. So he was a little busy. So we did not get the calendar out this year, but we're hoping for a two thousand twenty-five one. And then our biggest project that we took on and will be our focus for this next year is, of course, getting the bell cabin. To save that, we're going to start a major fundraising campaign, so we can get that moved to the Dow House completely restored and all of that. So, I mean, that is of course the biggest focus for this year. So I'll be hitting you guys up for money, just so you know. Because we need a lot of it to get that cabin restored and moved. So, um, that's, that's.
You know how much I played with the cabin and.
So the, it was seventy-five thousand and that was just taking it apart, restoring log by log and moving it. But we will need the foundation, which I'm hoping to have one of my friend that has a construction company, hoping that they can break away and do a foundation project for us. And then the chimney will need to be rebuilt. So we're hoping to get like a hundred thousand. That will, and what they're going to be doing is taking the chimney that was there and using those same stones. Because those are, they're good stones. They are probably what, when they move the cabin, so almost a hundred years old. When they move the cabin, you know, we want to be able to save as much as we can, but be able to use it.
So are people volunteering, like to put the foundation down or is that all a good kind of a deal?
I'm hoping to have that. I have a friend that has a big, huge construction company and they do a lot of work at the ethanol plant. So I'm hoping that I've kind of put a bug in his ear and I think he'll feel much so. Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, and we'll have to have the specs from the, um, the company that will be moving the cabin. And he'll have it all laid out for us, what we need and all of that. So. But, you know, if they can't do it, I'll be calling. I'll be calling Adam.
You thought they had much blueprint when they built that cabin a hundred and fifty years ago?
I'm pretty sure there were no blueprints.
Should be all winged a little bit, making more historically accurate.
Yeah. Well, but we did find out because there are doors on both sides of the cabin.
Two means of egress.
Well, we found out that they would.
Take a blind egress.
They would use that. They would take, they would have their mules or whatever they had with their wagon with the wood. That was an, they would bring them right in through the cabin so they could lay down all the foot and stuff. That's why they had those big doors on both sides of the cabin.
Really?
He was done to drag it through.
Yeah.
I'll be done. Yeah.
So.
Necessities, the mother of invention.
Yeah, exactly. So.
So is there some kind of a fundraiser going on or?
Yeah, we just started a GoFundMe page. You'll probably see that start showing on Facebook. So that is probably going to be the biggest one is just asking basically for donations. We probably have a good solid year before, um, we do have a pledge of twenty-five thousand, so we've got that.
Okay.
And then, um, uh, and then it will be, I mean, it's gonna happen. So someone has said it will happen.
Where are they gonna tear it down? That's probably gonna be pretty soon, though.
So it's slated for sometime in twenty-four. They don't, we don't know exactly when, um, because Heritage Woodworks that, they're out of Clemmons, Iowa. Um, they have a lot of other projects going on, but they wanted to get us on the calendar to at least get it dismantled. And then, um, and then rebuild in twenty-five. So we, we just don't know exactly when.
Why just knowing what, what they're doing down there with the park or is it gonna be in their road if they start?
No, they told us that they're not gonna be working on that part of the park yet. So we have plenty of time. I mean, we, if it's done, if it's out of there by the end of this year, that's all they really cared about. So we've been working with the city, working with conservation. We've been working with, trying to facilitate this whole move. I mean, that's what the historic preservation's been trying to do. And then, of course, kick off this fundraiser and help with getting the money. Because we promised conservation. It's not going on their land until, I mean, if it's, it's gotta be completely restored, completely done and all of that. Like, we don't want to burden conservation with any cost that way, so. So.
Very good.
And then, so this is, I just need you to sign that so I can get this submitted to the state and we can do action.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
You said you'd be coming to us for money. I mean, like personally?
Personally.
But I need to write something down.
No, no, no.
All right, so we've had our presentation. Uh, we need a motion to approve this, uh, Certified Local Government Annual Report.
Motion to approve.
Any further discussion? Now I'll call the vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. All right.
Sounds like interest.
All right. Major person.
I appreciate what you're doing for team. All the historical values and.
Yeah, I mean, I wish we could save everything, but obviously there's some things that are just beyond saving. But, you know, the cabin, it's literally the oldest um, structure in Crawford County. It needs to be saved. And I think it's going to the Dow House, you know, it'll be open for tours again. It'll, you know, and we've even talked about, you know, the big, once it gets open, like having one of those old annual, um, cellar, the cellar picnics. Like have that as the grand opening and.
I never bring that picture of, of the old settlers picnic in nineteen seventy-three. I was the youngest settler. I think Hermapheney was the oldest.
At that again, yeah.
Pictures of them somewhere.
That's awesome.
You'll have to get some more costumes.
I will. Neither will.
Have our little skin hats and.
You get some of them. They come to that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Yeah.
Thanks, Amy.
Yeah, well, I have, I have pictures of the whole thing, black and white. They're about this big that, uh, somebody took over the years and I tote somewhere at my house that was left there by Alan Hayden, so thank you very much. All righty. On our agenda next is discussion take action resolution on twenty twenty-four, uh, eight compensation board. Okay. So.
Like the sheet that just said all the dollar amounts.
That one, that one wasn't.
It's in the folder, yep.
Yep. With the comp board recommended, those ten thousand and where we were, I mean, where we, where I.
Decided.
Three thousand for elected officials.
I do appreciate what the comp board put in this year as far as research and what they came back to us with. I think they did an outstanding job as far as.
I do too.
Working through where to come up with numbers and.
They were late. It was.
Kind of a unique thing is like Friday, talking with all the other supervisors, it's all over the board. Where's it at? I know Carroll County, where Gene, he was just, cause they came back with a cross-the-board raise this year and, you know, they just frustrated heck over there. Uh, Clay County, they used the, they had that group in here that was gonna do the.
Yep. Oh, the HR one?
Yeah.
Yep.
They used their recommendations.
Oh, sure.
So it was all over the board, you know, for what their difference in, so I mean, it was, it's unique and I, you know, I want to echo Dave's words. It's just tough for them people to get together, meet and come up with a recommendation. I think this year they probably, I don't, I wouldn't say get better than any, but I was, I was probably most pleased with it this year.
They really did a good job researching, putting effort in.
Had some new members on itself.
I thought they did.
Completely.
It was a good report. I mean, that's as good a report as we've had since I've been here anyway.
Yep.
All right. Any further discussion? All, it's a take action item.
Yep.
I'll make the motion to accept the resolution that we've instructed right there before auditor. On the twenty twenty-four dash eight compensation order.
All right.
Pay raises for elected official.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? If not, I'll call the vote. All in favor, aye. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Resolution?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It's been approved. Thank you. All righty. I'm gonna have it on here again. Uh, discussion take action for county contract, CRP contract.
A little different. Uh, you've all been talking, basically get all your, quite a bit last two, then. So, gee, it almost reassured me a hundred percent that it'd be passed. It would just gotta find a fiscal agent. Or, and Craig and I have been working on that yet and I don't know if we've got any definitive yeses or no.
We, we did not. And I, there's, I guess it's a good thing that Colin actually came in, cause I was gonna ask Colin a question after our meeting. I was gonna stop in there, but what do you run into with five oh one C three organizations is they are designed for a specific purpose. And so take for example Crawford County Hunger Fighters, their specific purpose is to give away food, purchase food, give away food. And when you have an expenditure that jumps up like this, that shows them getting land rent, basically, and then giving a portion, a large portion of that back to the county, it's not in accordance with what they're doing. And so there's a chance that the IRS could take their five oh one C three status away. And their attorney who set up the five oh one C three says that, I, I told him that it's not worth it just for, you know, three or four thousand dollars to take that risk. And so that, um, got me thinking that, well, we might have that problem with other five oh one C three organizations, which made me think of, could we just come up with our own, friends of the county? And we'd be our own agent and then we take the funds that we get from the rent that go into the five oh one C three, we could, we give money to TAP, which is a five oh one C three, so we can take money from our five oh one C three to that. We, uh, all of the, um, preschools, I think are five oh one C threes, money that we take in our general fund to give to them, we could take out of our five oh one C three organization to give to another five oh one C three organization. And that's what I was gonna ask Colin was that, I guess, do we know, is there a five oh one C three that's county-led that currently is like friends of Crawford County or you, are you aware of any?
I'm not aware of any.
I should be able to. They'd be searchable, wouldn't they, through the Secretary of State?
Yes, they're all registered with the Secretary of State.
Did it operate with Pheasants Forever as a five oh one C three before? I mean, they're five oh one C three, right?
I don't know. I guess.
Wonder how that works.
Forever is, I don't know.
Cause that was how we were doing it before.
Oh, we were doing it with Jerry Bruce.
That's right.
It was, right, with an individual. We came up with the idea of doing the five oh one C three. You said that.
Right.
Alma or something maybe came up with that.
Well, that's what they were telling me at the state office, that it had to be a, I still, I don't understand that for a hundred percent, cause well, Jerry Bruce could get it, but.
I mean, and I have searched and searched and searched and tried to find if a local government can accept CRP payments. And I cannot find that ruling that says they can't.
Yeah, I can dive, I mean, I can dive into it.
What we've found in the past was we'd give them if there was money left, right?
Right, there's no, yeah, I think that was part of it.
After all the CRP contracts were paid, you know, and if there was anything left, and Crawford County had some acres and Shelby County has some acres, but it wasn't enough for both of them. They kinda just split it out and said, you guys get some here and you guys get some.
I think that's what CRP would be paid directly to individuals first.
Yeah.
And then.
Then to county, then the governor.
Then the governor. You wouldn't think they would ever be short.
Well, you shouldn't think so, cause if they approved the contract, they know how much money they're gonna get.
So do you feel like?
Forward accordingly, right?
We're spraying around the corner, are we?
Well, that's what I mean. I mean, if we, if we decide to go down the form our own five oh one C three organization, I mean, that takes three to six months to get approval from IRS from what I, and then if we get from talking to attorneys and, um, looking online.
I don't think there's no fast track, don't you think?
No.
So is your recommendation then to set a time and date for auction, rent auction, and go back that route again or? You wanna dive into this a little more?
I mean, I'd like to dive in, I guess, if Colin, if we can find out, can just the county itself, you know, just sign on the CRP, uh, agreement or contract, just have the county sign it or Chairman of the Board sign, we don't even use it by C three.
I'll look into it.
Okay.
Like I said, I think we do.
We can do that. That does may put jeopardy of the funds.
Look into that too, Todd.
Look into, is it, is that really, is that proven that that would possibly be a problem or is that just kind of?
This is how we got to the state and we are, cause we weren't receiving any payments for CRP.
I agree.
Yep.
It's kinda scary.
Because why?
And then figured it out.
Cause they were governmental.
Coleman, Coleman delved into it, I think, out at the ASCS office or FSA or whatever you call it now.
But the problem is rules change constantly.
So we, we, we just need a fiscal agent or?
Well, that's what.
Well, so like I said, Jerry Bruce, he was, he was the renter that, and just on that chunk, but he was qualified him for.
Right, he receives, and he receives the remainder of our CRP contract.
Like the fiscal agents that do other things for government entities, you know, I mean, like.
You see the fair, I think there's a fine line. Like, we couldn't have a Crawford County Fair Board, cause they are, by the state of Iowa, are still considered an extension of Crawford County.
Okay.
Get it?
Yep. If there's a farmer that would just step up and say, I'll take it on. It's not gonna screw with my taxes. I'll, I'll receive, I'll do the paperwork. I'll receive it and I'll get the money out to the fair or.
How many years?
Whatever. I mean, we don't have.
That's okay, yeah.
I mean, one of the things that the attorneys that drew up the five oh one C three for Crawford County Hunger Fighters also said that, he said if their name is on that contract and there's an accident or something that happens on the county farm, and they're the ones that are receiving the rent, that I just instructed them that, that's not something you wanna do for that s- small amount of funds that you'll be getting. You're, so their liability, I mean, yeah.
So the simplest would really be if we could just, as a county, sign on it and they, as long as they paid us the amount.
Right, which would make you wonder then, if we form a five oh one C three, is that just an extension of our county also?
That's right.
They probably.
Form and it would be an extension of the town.
But the other problem with that is it's gonna take so long to get one, you know, form that that's still not.
It just means for one year, we'd have to rent it out, do bids, rent it out. You know, the contract, I think, currently states that it ends, uh, what's September? Isn't it in September? No.
February. The, the current time track lease agreement where that ends.
Who'd have thought this would be this?
Who'd have? I mean, the, the other, the other attorney, the Adam Hall Rich, and Adam says, Craig, I understand you guys are just trying to do something simple and easy. And he said, I'm dealing right now with the IRS and a five oh one C three in Western Iowa. And he said, they just do not understand how we function out here. And he said, it's just really frustrating.
Yeah.
And so he said, I've just been, if it looks like it could cause a problem, we just don't wanna stir up the IRS.
I agree with him wholeheartedly. So, but it, it almost appears we're in kind of a time crunch to decide what we're gonna do. I mean, you have to.
We may be screwed for this year. Close.
Planters to be rolled.
Certainly close, I mean, that's.
Not a deadline anymore. I think it's supposed to march first through.
Yeah, but that's, that's arbitrary there. I mean, he's talking about planters will be rolling, farmers will be wanting to have their ground and know it, cause they gotta have seed and fur on the ground.
Which puts us up against, uh. So, I guess, uh.
You want it on next week's agenda? Is that time date?
We prob, I, I don't think we could.
We can't do it today, no.
No, we can't today, but we have to next week be ready to roll.
Right.
With what we're doing. No more discussion.
I guess you guys have been putting a lot of the work into it, so I'm gonna lean hard on you guys' recommendation.
We go down, open a door, kinda slam it back.
Exactly. It looks like.
And I think it's gonna continue that way. I don't think there's an easy, uh, it's designed the way it is for a reason.
Man, I had one farmer reach out to me and said, have them farm it another year and put it in the, cause we could probably dictate what, I don't know, I mean, it'd be reflected in the rent, I'm sure, but probably needs to be in the soybeans and that's, either when you seed it now, they don't, it's got a better seed bed for the seed actually growing.
Ooh, soybeans, they'd be out of there for sure.
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's some benefits of farming, having it farmed another year.
Yeah, that's a big benefit right there.
Well, sounds like we just tackled it.
Will give us, give us a week to come up with some, if we combine some compelling information and some stuff that make it actually work next week.
All right.
Maybe we should just have both things on our.
I was just gonna say, all right, can we have it so we have option to set time date or?
And if we come back with all doors still shut, we just run the farm out.
All right. They're both on the agenda as discussion take action. Next week is, uh, when we make.
It's gonna be simple to be on the county.
Oh, I thought so too, but you've done a great job of trying to look at all the options, look under every rock and see what we can do. So, uh, when you realize you run into a brick wall, we need to go another direction, I guess. So, um, good effort. It just.
No, there's probably still a chance.
Well.
I don't know what it is.
We got it till Friday morning at nine o'clock.
Maybe another five oh one C three would take their advice from their attorney and like, you know, don't scare me. Let's do it. Okay, I mean, it's not our position.
I mean, he mentioned that, uh, there's the Friends of the Wellness Center or something. He said they've got money, you know, flowing in and out all the time to them. Might not be a big deal. I talked to Clint Von Vlon yesterday and he thought, I wasn't in favor of that option. He was gonna check with, uh, the outfit that's trying to raise funds for the new show race. I think they're a viable one.
He's gonna let me know.
Okay, then that'd be ag, at least. Yeah. Well, there's.
I don't know, like I said, there.
Still hope. Still hope. All right. We'll have it on there.
Always new.
Different items next week, so. All righty. Our next item is discuss take action Crawford County Wellness Center funding. All righty, so.
Okay, so this is just kind of to clear up the action that was taken by the board back in August, August eighth of twenty twenty-three in regards to a commitment of an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from ARPA funds. The motion as amended was a commitment of a hundred thousand, now fifty thousand for the next three years.
Yes.
So, it now indicates the fiscal year we're in, probably, but, so. Um, so we've already given the Wellness Center three, or thirty-one thousand, five hundred sixty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. To get to one hundred thousand would be sixty-eight thousand, four thirty-three and twenty-five cents. That money, the hundred thousand, would all come out of ARPA funds. The remaining three years of fifty thousand would not come out of ARPA funds because they are currently committed. Possibly this next, the first fifty thousand would partially be funded by ARPA funds, maybe about twenty thousand dollars approximately.
Appreciate you still running out.
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
Yeah. I mean, it, I know they're, they're reaching out for the funds. We made this commitment.
To help with the cost, upfront cost, which we agreed that we would.
Right.
Oh, we admitted the, the upfront cost of it, but we, we can speculate how money would be spent.
No.
Right. Right.
And in the very beginning with our ARPA funds, our original meeting was to help.
Yeah, it might not be optimal, but.
So we would have met our.
So we would have met our requirement and commitment for this year if we.
If we do the sixty-eight thousand, yeah.
And they sent over bills totaling that sixty-eight thousand, or?
No, it was more than that, it was about ninety-one thousand, I believe, if I remember right. So this would, this would help their needs also, some bills that have already been committed.
And it also cleared up any, anything on their behalf of like.
Right, and they can see what the future holds for them.
Available on the ARPA funds that were originally set aside for wellness in Crawford County.
Right.
So.
Could be spent prior to breaking and driving.
The seven hundred and fifty is, that is stipulation that that may not be spent.
So by approving it, we're on par for what we already agreed to.
Right.
Right. It's just clarifying the exact dollar amount.
Right, because they kind of thought it might be two hundred and fifty.
They thought it was natural.
It's just a hundred thousand.
So that's what's on the agenda to have it, uh, agreed upon how we're going to fund that, so. What are your wishes?
Do you need a motion just to send them that sixty-eight thousand?
That, that's what we agreed.
It's just kind of, um, clarification and transparency, say.
I didn't write the number down, do you?
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, four thirty-three, and twenty-five cents.
That's the remainder.
It is.
Right.
Yes.
Of that hundred.
Brings us to a hundred thousand.
And then the other hundred and fifty, we haven't committed that to playtime, for lack of a better word.
Fifty over three years.
About fifty.
Yeah, it goes over three years, but I'm saying, is that, is that committed to help pay prior expenses, or do we have, is that?
Wasn't designated. I mean, it didn't designate.
Well, we did, we got stipulated.
Bricks going in the dirt by the right. Or at least by another year from now, they're either gonna say.
Put our overall.
Building, or they're freaking giving up.
Was for physical.
Physical building.
So would you like a motion, okaying the, the sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollar and twenty-five cents, be used to pay your bills, or you just run to the city and let them spend it?
Right, we would write it, because the, the, the claims, the invoices they sent, they had already paid the full amount, this was reimbursing them.
So I'd say in a word, to fulfill our.
Obligation.
Our, our one hundred thousand dollar commitment.
Commitment.
For fiscal.
For wellness.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, yes, yes.
I like that.
By your net.
That meeting, duh, so July one.
Yes.
Yeah, uh, so, not so many more, or do I make a motion to, uh, guy to instruct the auditor's office to page the city of Denison, six hun- sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred thirty-three dollars and twenty-five cents.
Four hundred thirty-three.
Four thirty-three, twenty-five.
All right, sixty-eight thousand, four thirty-three, twenty-five. For ARPA, or of ARPA funds, payable to the city of Denison for our twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year obligation to the Wellness Center. Has now been met, and paid in full.
All right.
Say it.
All right, we have a motion second, any further discussion on the item? Now I'll call the vote.
You the lawyer.
Living lawyer.
Living lawyer. Hi.
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 You got a tail end.
Yeah, which kind of a tail end girl.
All right, all right, get it? All your bones, I, but. Looking as good as a pretty. All righty, we are in the citizen's. Get it, pardon, uh, anybody in the Zoom want to have a citizen input? On what? Anybody else in the audience, uh, have any input on the citizens?
Colin.
Colin?
Few weeks ago, I was in here talking about Dickinson and Palo Alto County, their ordinances for pipeline. And, uh, Colin wanted to circle, talk with them and circle back around with you guys to get a better idea of where they're coming from, what they're hoping to accomplish. So it turned out Dickinson is still in the works, Dickinson has a past there, so, yeah, I've talked to the Dickinson County Attorney, and he essentially said, I mean, we talked, and it was helpful, but he didn't want me to talk about it publicly at our meetings, so, that's the update from him. Palo Alto is in between county attorneys right now.
No.
Um, their questions on the ordinance have been referred out, uh, to their auditor, which I haven't had a chance to talk to yet, um.
To their auditor?
Yes.
Okay, there's next to no.
So that's. Your military.
Yeah, returners, terrorists.
But that's, that's all I got on that.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thanks for checking.
To be continued, huh?
Yep.
All right, thank you for the update.
Thank you, Colin.
All right. Being, uh, anybody else? All right.
Last, last thing I did enter about, uh, nine one one call.
Yeah.
Is there, uh, somebody have oversight on that oversight? Yeah.
Dispatch has all the nine one one calls at the Law Enforcement Center.
Yeah, but you got, you gotta get our payment of fee to do it, an hourly wage.
Yeah, there should be, there could be a potential fee associated with the records.
It'll be dollars an hour from the go over.
Records.
I don't know if there's somebody who oversees, or, well, there's a board that manages or governs the nine one one, but the, it is managed or operated by this police chief of the city of Denison.
Right.
And they might have, they might have fees associated with the records request, which is allowable by law. It has to be a fairer fee, it can't be an obligation.
Right, and when you talk about oversight, what, what type of oversight are you?
Well, I had a nine one one call here a couple of years ago, and we were down, somebody shooting a gun, seeing a, nobody showed up. There's no police officer there either.
Are you looking at the recording of your calls?
I don't know why they didn't show up.
Oh.
They showed up the other time right away, but.
What, are you in the city or the county?
City.
Manila.
Manila.
Oh, so you, you have to talk to the Manila Chief of Police.
Yeah, but he referred you right back to.
Well, that.
Look.
That, that police in Manila would be Roger, correct?
Yeah.
And so.
I don't get over with that. And the authority having jurisdiction over Roger would be the city council of, of, I mean.
Right, yes.
I mean, there's a chain of command, we. How can, how can the other calls of deputies up here come down? They go down there for other calls. You know, I guess.
So I'm the county attorney, I worked with all the law enforcement, so, um, Manila has their own police department, but the sheriff's department does offer coverage to all the cities in the county, or even Denison sometimes, if they need, need a helping hand. So it's not uncommon, even though there's a Manila city police, for if they need coverage or backup, to have, uh, the sheriff's office go down to Manila too.
Well, I think while Roger didn't come down to other times, because of the conflict interest, he didn't charge the other guy.
Yeah, you have to take that up with, uh, either like Kyle said, either go to the chief of police, and if you think you can't get anywhere with Roger, then, you know, the chief of police is, walks down to Manila, it would be the Manila city council.
Mayor.
Mayor, yeah, where they're.
Just now Floyd Gaskell.
Yeah, they, uh, I'm just getting a runaround, everybody's gonna scoot back. How was your travel live, Neil?
But if you want a record request for your initial question about phone call related to that, you can have to go talk to the police chief of the city of Denison, because he is the, the authority having jurisdiction.
They're designing a long call center, yeah. So if they send a deputy sheriff down there, from up here, Roger doesn't show up, you still gotta go through Roger, uh.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's an interesting point, Colin.
It depends on what your question is, all right, if your question is, why didn't the Manila PD show up, yeah, that would be a question for Roger.
Why, why, why the sheriff's department didn't show up?
If your question is, why didn't the sheriff's department show up, then you have to top the same.
Who?
The sheriff, Stangler.
But if, if it's a dispatch, and I don't know the answer to this, uh, if it's, if he has a question about the dispatch, if he goes and talks to the chief of police in Denison, and has him investigate possibly to help him with that answer, would that be a possibility?
You can make open record requests to the dispatch center, which is controlled, and there's a lot of different entities involved, right? So the dispatch is controlled by the Denison Police Department, even for calls that go to the city of Manila, even for calls that go to our sheriff's department. All the nine one one calls are rerouted to our dispatch center, which is controlled by the Denison Police. So if you have questions about any kind of record or phone, nine one one call, if you want any kind of record of anything that went through dispatch, you would have to start with the Denison Police Chief.
And where's the dispatch at?
They only see, um, yeah.
They said the main, like, there's top of their class, huh?
Sheriff's.
Yeah, the sheriff, so the law enforcement center, the sheriffs on the top floor, dispatch and the police are on the lower level.
And why did she send me up there to sheriff?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
Thank you.
She might have been confused about the question you were asking. If you're asking a record request for the phone call related to that, they should be the ones that provide that information for you.
Uh, yes.
How can the county attorney?
I, I'm, I'm wondering if somebody just has a question about how something was handled, and they're not really, they don't really need, could he not request that he, that, uh, the chief of police, because he controls the nine one one, just go back and listen to see if he's satisfied with the response, and then report back to you? Wouldn't that possibly be a place to start? Just a thought, I'm not saying that that's the right way, but it, it's, it could just be, you'd want him as the, uh, we call it the, uh, controlling entity of that department to see if he can follow up, to see if he believes that that's the way that should have been handled, I do not know the answer to that.
I would offer this, Jane, if the question is whether or not the call is dispatched properly, then, yeah, that would be definitely a question for uh, the police chief, because he controls the dispatches, they're on his payroll.
I think that's a place to start, don't you?
Maybe this isn't really our wheelhouse.
No.
Yeah, and, well, yeah, at the end of the day, Dave's right, I mean, the, the board supervisors are kind of the last entity that would have their fingers in any of this.
So far down the chain.
They're, they're just trying to help you problem solve your, the issue that, that you have.
Yeah, lead you to the direction.
Right.
Which is that way.
But disturbing, you called out, up here in nine one one, nobody shows up for days, but somebody shooting a gun in the city bus. Bullet's ricocheting around it, Frank, wait, the workers down there working in it, somebody gets shot, and it's, that's what's said.
I wonder if that's like, I was just thinking, you know, like Rogers on there, or at least his name is anyway, but.
Yeah.
The, uh, if he was working as sheriff, he might not have been able, I don't, I don't know what that's, how that stipulated.
Right, yeah, he has a shift with the sheriff's department, he had a shift.
Yeah, so he's got, so it might have been when he was on duty as the sheriff, but then you would think that we would have some kind of, I don't know, if they have a twenty eighty with towns that have their own police force, I don't know how that works, you know, that's why we, we're not.
We don't know.
A good deal on a bunch of reasons.
Our job or our job. Sheriff's Department, they come down for others.
Like Collins, and they do fill in, in absence, like, police chief.
I just got Wi-Fi these days from somebody that's.
Well, that's a good question.
Well. What's going on, we can't help you, we're not passing the buck, because this isn't our buck to pass. This is not our wheelhouse for you, and this sounds like a legal matter, you need to take.
If you're having a response time of either the Manila PD or the Crawford County Sheriff's Department, you have to talk with their respective departments, so either the sheriff's department you want to talk to, talk to Tim Stangler, if it's Manila, Manila PD, you talk to Roger S.
Go ahead.
And this happened in twenty nineteen, you said?
Nineteen, twenty.
Okay.
A while ago.
Yeah.
Wish we could help you a little better, but we really.
Sheriff, if somebody shows up with the other time right on.
We get it, all right, any other, uh, citizen input, otherwise we'll have to have a motion to adjourn.
Did you wanna, did you wanna, man, or did you wanna just run over this sheet?
Yeah, we can, does everybody have their sheet?
All right.
Yeah, please, please. Our truck chief. All right.
That color.
Sorry.
Where's your color? You got some color from your coffee?
Yeah. All right.
So.
Leave us to it.
Um, if you're looking at this page, the top one is fund balances. So it shows all of our major fund balance, all our major funds, and what those balances will be, um. Following, um.
Yep.
By the end of the year, next, our new fiscal year, the new budget year.
Fund balances, so we're. Okay. Yep.
I don't know if that explains.
This is where they'll be at on January.
January, the ending of six thirty to twenty-five. After this year, after the budget we were working on has had its chance to look in revenue and expenditures.
Yeah, and the next, so the next group is expenditures, it shows what we have, um. Budgeted and proposed, yep. It shows our reestimated for twenty-four. And what's budgeted in twenty-five. Leaving us, I guess, total, um, budgeted expenditures at, uh, twenty-two point seven eight million dollars. And. Yep, we go to taxes levy, but let's jump to that back page at our levy rates. That's it, thank you. So the new, the, the actual, um, force fiscal year ending, um, twenty-five, our general basic rate will be three point three nine eight oh six, and that is due to House File seven eighteen. That brought us, um, to that, normally, the, I mean, the max for general basic is three point five.
Have we been at that for?
Forever.
Ever.
Because it's the max, some counties, um, have historically budgeted over that max, and they could get.
The dirty thirty.
Permission, thank you, yes. There was like five special permissions, now we're down to one. Right. And that's gonna be eliminated, I mean, eventually, I don't know that that will be an option.
What are they down to as the what?
Emergency.
Emergency.
Like a natural disaster.
Yeah, okay.
Right. And so, so that brings us to the three point three nine eight oh six. Um, the House File seven eighteen does not affect our supplemental funds, like general supplemental or rural supplemental. But it also affected rural basic. Right. So the max for rural basic is three point nine five. Um, with, uh, the House File seven eighteen, it's bringing us down to three point eight three four nine five. Remind me, is there a cap on the sub? Three nine five. Oh, I mean. Oh, sup, no, sup is as needed. But it's only for FICA, IFRS, health insurance. Very specific things. It's very limited in what it can cover. Right, we also, um, election expenses are also out of general sub. Um, so, yeah, um, I know our rural sub balance has run tight, which you can see on the front page.
Yep, I would look next to it.
Um, so. That's kind of why I'm proposing maybe going to twenty cents rather than ten cents, we've been at ten cents for a couple of years. Um, so.
Well, I think, and we were talking about this earlier. In fairness to Crawford County, we are obviously not one of the dirty thirty, because our levies have actually decreased in this building for the last four years.
Are not. Not our levies.
Rate. Our levy rates.
Well, part of that was from losing mental health.
Yeah.
Otherwise, our levies have stayed. And rules up, two years ago, it went down. Or a year ago, twenty twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, we took it down to ten cents. And taxes were referring to the overall urban, and we're all great.
Right.
Right.
Yep, and we've always done a good job of trying to keep it at five to five-five or whatever, I mean, it's just in evaluations and, as I said, the mental health, you know, that saved us, what, forty-three dollars a head there a couple of years ago, or that, or forty-seven dollars, whatever that was at that time, per population, and those are. So it gave us, that saved us that year for having a debacle.
Yep, yep, so.
Increased levy rates, which we all know, everybody was so happy about them last, uh, September when they got passed out, well, is also what driving this, though, I mean, fortunately, we had them increased levy rates to offset House File seven eighteen.
Valuations.
Increased valuations of the properties will offset, you know, your levy.
Right, so we've always typically been able to stay, give some salary increases, have inflation costs, but that increased valuations increased our levy amounts received without having to adjust our levy rates. And that was always the sweet spot to live with it.
Yeah.
And now that's kind of changed with.
Yep.
Well, this year we've been only able to keep up with inflation.
And this year we're sitting good because of our overall growth.
Yeah.
Valuations are not.
Are sitting fair. But as we talked in the past.
Yep, sure we're gonna.
Yep, so we're looking at a ten cent re, ten, ten cent reduction in urban, in our urban rate, and we're looking at a twelve cent reduction in our rural rate.
And almost eleven. You're looking at an overall twenty three. Almost twenty three cent reduction if you add them together.
Right, but you don't because.
No, I.
Separate, I know, no, I know, but they're, yeah, they are levying to two separate groups of people. But yeah. And then at the very bottom, you can see what ten cents of levy will get you in the general supplemental and the rural supplemental.
Okay.
Ninety eight thousand.
And that's on a per thousand dollar of value. That's what these levy rates are based on per thousand dollars of value.
Well, then this number here is just your total five point four, four, four point nine.
When you say the rural sub, you know, a little, you just do the math. If you want to add that kind of back on or, you know.
Right, you can always look at reducing it. Yeah, because otherwise you're looking at a transfer, which is, I mean, we still probably will do a small transfer.
This year.
Yeah, well, and I'm talking the new fiscal year. Yeah, we still have one to do, I think, for this year too, though. You're right.
Well, I think we're, we're walking a tight open. We're did what we're supposed to and coming very tight with the budget to.
They're interested in all the dirty.
Really rope or more like a thread?
That's a thread.
What's the punishment?
Yeah, what, I mean, the dirty thirty, what's gonna happen?
They have like, what, four years, four more years to make the adjustment.
I can, well.
They can happen.
Mills County member, she said they just can't make that happen.
So, so Terry, on your top of your front page, when it clear to the right, when it shows our total, I'm assuming that's operating funds basically. And it drops to one point eight million next year. Is that also because of same file? I mean, that we just can't generate? I mean, do you foresee that moving forward? I mean, it was eight hundred grand the year before. It was pretty, not much the first two years. Then it was eight hundred, now it's one point eight. I mean.
Well, a million of that or nine hundred sixty nine thousand comes out of your other.
Right, and we are spending down our ARPA funds. And that's where ARPA, ARPA resides in that other column. So we are getting down probably to the last year or two of, of, you know, getting those projects done.
That just shows coming out of the expenditures.
Right, a total, but you can see almost a million of it is out of that other column. And of course, secondary roads is, you know, got one of our biggest budgets, so, uh, you know, a lot of that spending is.
And those are each others.
So that leaves us with a project and a, and a fund balance pool of ten million dollars, which to me is kind of a healthy number because if you, we got a twenty two million dollar budget, that's six months of operating that we have in reserves, right? If something, another COVID twenty four comes out and they say you don't have to pay your taxes till June of twenty five, we're gonna have to have something to operate on. Or send everybody home.
Yeah, that would send everybody home.
So you gotta have a nice fund balance to work with. And six months is kind of generally what they give as a recommendation or?
I think that was Chuck's recommendation, all Chuck, you know, all the years, so I trust Chuck's recommendation.
That's fifty years of looking at this page with, with color, my dear.
Yeah.
Well, Chuck, remember my very first year, he grabbed me, we sat down and went over these numbers together. We did that for a couple of years in a row. And, you know, I said that six months, so you don't want to overtax, but yet you need to have enough of a reason for.
So you don't have to overtax next year.
Right. And I think you all have done a good job of, you know, talking to the departments and not budgeting all the what ifs.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you gotta, you gotta have a little bit of that in there because emergencies happen and money needs to be expended now.
But there's departments that have just thinking of.
Some of them are, and you can see in the, in the year, um, the fund balance column that like even our carryover in the new, the, from reestimated to the fiscal year ending six thirty of twenty five, we're only looking at a hundred and three in the general fund of carryover. And you can see history has it. There's only, what, four years ago, it was a hundred and seven, so we've been carrying over anywhere from two to three hundred thousand dollars in our general basic fund balance. So I, I, I guess I like to see that tightened up, that, that, that it is tightened up.
We know where some of that comes from because we have departments giving this back.
Yes.
For a hundred thousand.
Right, which means they're over budgeting and over levying.
And flip side of that, though, I mean, you don't want to have it so large that you have that not carryover, but enough that it kind of keeps up with
Right.
inflation for a general fund, because you don't want to stay at like a three million dollar year after year after year in your general fund.
Right.
It has to at least grow with our budget.
Got a little bit of.
I think the three.
But you're right, not too much, not too much.
The three departments that have to worry most about inflationary cost year to year is obviously secondary roads, public health, because they're buying things throughout the year, and then the sheriff's department. The rest, you know, you kind of program what you're gonna need for the year and you probably get it, you know, I mean, so yours is a little more manageable, how's that? But I mean, the other ones, if you don't know, like Fuel, look what Fuel did to us, you know, two years ago in Paul's, I mean, gosh, it didn't seem like we were ever making, done making budget amendments by Fuel.
I'm just gonna ask you, Terry, what is the debt service that the county has?
The, um, the jail. This is our last year of paying on it.
What's paying off this year then?
Oh, what a great idea. I love that.
We got paid off since I started, so let's get it paid off.
Yeah, so the county will have, no, it'll be approximately.
No debt?
Yep.
How many year term is my tax?
What was it? We financed it. We financed it about a dozen years ago. Fourteen years ago, it was early on when I was auditor, became auditor. We financed it to, uh, decrease the interest rate. So it's been about, has it been about twenty years? Probably close to.
Yeah, probably.
But at the time when they did it, what a good time to do it. You look at what Carroll County spent on their jail.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, there was no better time to build one. I don't know how they built it because they'd have gone up in price since then, but.
And I'm not saying Carroll didn't need it, it's just.
No, just in the cost difference itself. Um, Chuck is probably gonna be back in the building this afternoon. And he's been looking at this stuff, um, taking it to him and having him look at things, um, or getting him kind of caught up. And just, I like an extra set of eyes. Michelle's been doing an excellent job, um, between, you know, figuring out Chuck's spreadsheets and working on the Department of Management's filing. Um, excellent, super job. So we're learning, we're, we've been learning over the years having Chuck right in our office, so that's been great. And he'll be back this afternoon and.
Super good.
We'll, uh, you know, make sure things are tightened up. Um, we have that mailing coming up in the early part of March.
That mailing was brought up.
That's House File seven eighteen also.
Saying how much additional cost has come from each county for.
I don't know how much it's gonna be for us. It'll probably be around ten thousand dollars.
There's a lot of counties saying twenty five to thirty, even bigger counties.
Depending on how many mailings you have. I know they're trying to clean it up, so.
Always focus on us.
So like if Kyle owns land in multiple taxing districts, we're trying to make sure that he gets exactly the information, not an excess of info for each of those taxing districts, because it's different. It'll be different for each one. So, yeah, we're working on that. We've got a company that's, uh, mailing services is helping with our mailing. Um, our software company Tyler has been working hard to make sure the info that needs to go to the Department of Management gets there and so, and it'll have, it'll have school, city and county levies, levy rates on there, so people can, uh, see what to expect. It's providing another, a wide color for sure.
High card.
Yeah, it's just another level of transparency that the state felt we were not providing.
Oh.
At our cost.
At our cost.
At our cost, of course.
You know.
Never any unfunded mandate.
So I'm hoping to have Chuck maybe at the table next week, just in case you all have more questions that I don't. Whatever, I don't know the answer to, I guess.
Well, I will.
You're doing a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes. Yep.
A lot of numbers, so I don't need to.
There's a lot.
Are we gonna next week? Put on, um, admin discussion, take action for second area roads admin group?
Yes.
Let's do.
Yep. You guys have already worked it out.
Well, we have to discuss it. I mean.
I mean, you guys have worked out your part, right?
We, well, well.
Not.
We gotta do ours and you go back to them, right?
We said, no, no, they get what we say. There's not a union negotiation.
So we know what.
Oh, so you don't have to go back to them.
No, we just have a window of what we discussed with them and we have to sit down and decide what.
Okay.
What we agree on.
Meet in the middle, maybe?
We can discuss that next week.
Yeah.
Um, I also was gonna bring up, I can bring up, I'm like, I did, when I was at the ISAC, I did talk to the Carroll County supervisors and I was under the impression they said they were gonna have Cindy and Big Mike come over, get on the agenda.
Yeah, I think Carrie Kersey's gonna try and organize something, so, because I let her know what you two had responded back to me and and she said, well, I think they're expecting me to put, you know what I mean, to organize it, not me, but me being Carrie Kersey, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so something's getting handled and they'll probably end up on our agenda in the next week or two to be able to talk about that contract. And I believe I've shared our current contract with you. Of course, the rates have gone up over the year and they're not reflected within that contract, but they have gone up every, every year, so, or not every year, I should say.
Cause I told them at the time, at the meeting, I said, well, come over, you know, we want to be fair is fair.
Right.
Um, we'll just discuss where we're at. And if we, when we readjust, we readjust.
Since she works over there through public health, does, do they, does that board have anything to do with her rates, Carrie's rates?
I don't know.
I don't know about.
She's coming to this board.
I never, I never thought about that, just, just sitting here right now.
Does it say it in that contract?
Budget, though.
She's not in your budget?
She is. She's in our budget.
Oh, yeah, not.
Our budget.
Not in, not in public health budget. She's, yeah.
Switched hats for an minute.
Got it.
She is, she is more of a, just a way to handle public health.
That's right, right.
She does.
She has ours, right, contact employee.
She's doing the wells and the septic systems and the different things. We pay a set amount and then.
Right.
Carroll County pays the full amount.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing a lane of travel there.
I was trying to, I think I was thinking through, trying to think that same thing.
Yeah, I know, it's, this board right here that's.
Okay.
Do the contract.
On the agenda.
Just for FYI, nine one one records are only available by subpoena. Nine one one phone call in to protect potential.
Innocent.
If you want them, you need a lawyer up, I guess, if you want to get some.
There you go.
Yeah, I already know that.
Okay.
That's why I never did it.
All right. I just was, sent that tidbit. And I make sense, I guess, because there is vital information and some of that was that.
Well, that's how you learn.
Be retracted or protected for the
Exactly.
Case or medical or whatever, so.
We all learn. How that.
Why is that, though, that's your own information you called up there, why you got a paper?
Just what he said, protection.
Get, get a lawyer.
All record, I mean, if you walk into that office, that office, that office and request records, they are at a fee that you yeah, that's your own information either.
Oh, yeah, you have to give them time called.
Correct, but.
It takes time to make it up.
Employees to find those records, which you have requested, so.
Which taxpayer does already pay that and do other services.
You know, then I understand why you got to get a subpoena, get a lawyer and what all you wanted to do, see the guy.
I guess on that would be, they don't know until they do that research who really called and what it's gonna be, you know, and so.
Yeah, I'm just reporting, not our, not my place to say why, it's just that.
That's the way it is.
Just now it changes.
Welcome to frustrating codes of Iowa.
Alrighty, anything else that needs to come before the board today before, I'm in no hurry, whatever you guys.
That inspector, is Troy Grove coming to the board or?
No, he kind of, I, I did call him back, um, and he said, well, it's no thing, he knows it's coming for sure. He didn't think he wanted to, uh, have a bunch of costs. We don't really know, so I gave him all the information and if we hired him to, you know, and, and build Summit, that, that's what the, uh, I U B board said would have to happen, but do, and so.
I'm just wondering when we need to start budgeting for that, when will the pipeline?
That's a great question.
It has to be an in and out when.
Yeah, but we need to. Yeah, but we need to budget for.
All we have to do is tell them when we want to start, but as we just heard from Colin, you know, we, we're still working on that, uh, ordinance to what we think needs to be on it.
We don't even know what it's gonna call.
Yeah.
Really, we're.
We don't have a clue, but that's gonna call.
Putting the cart ahead of the horse, because you don't even know who's gonna go through.
So that's kind of the disconnect between all of that.
I see the whites of their eye and they're not gonna.
But I did.
General Jackson, all right, let's do it.
I took the information down to Sunquest. Drop it off.
Budget problem, because if budget will take us to July, June thirtieth of twenty five, will they be plowing tile by then? I have no idea.
Nobody knows, and that's the.
They might be done by then.
Well.
Or they may not have started. We don't know.
Of course, women for the expenditure will mend for the revenue, because it'll be new revenue at that point, so.
Because we don't know how long it'll take for them to reimburse funds.
Well, that was kind of what Torres was a little bit, just, uh, kind of a concern that if by chance, let's say Shelby County went to their lawsuit, they say they're not even coming through Crawford County, we have all these costs.
Yeah.
It, you know, even though they say they should, how hard is it gonna be for them to pay for these costs that we, uh, incurred? Just because we were trying to be ahead of it, that is it gonna be a big fight to get Summit to reimburse us? Uh, and I would think that would make.
We don't want to pay.
Well, that's right, but, but some courts will want to be paid and you would think that when Summit comes to give us their update, they would say, well, I hope that you counties have got all of your, uh, guidelines for county inspections in check and I, and by this time you guys should have your alignment sheets showing track information, project route, a right of way limit, you know, these, this little specific thing.
We don't even know what it is, the route.
Well, that's kind of why I don't know if we have the cart in front of the horse, you know, if they did.
It's like we don't have a horse or a cart.
Wouldn't you think that they would tell us, though, that based on where they're at, that they're hoping that counties have this done and reassuring us that they're going to be paying us if, that these are the things they expect us to have done prior to even the I U B board makes their decision.
Might be something to throw at Riley.
Well, throw it. Then you have this list, right? Uh, it was put in your drawer.
Hold on.
I'll look up here and see.
I think I saw some.
Sunquest starts doing that process and we have to float paying them, we won't pay them until we get paid. Exactly. I don't want to be the middleman. I know.
He's got other projects he's working on, so if he stops what he's doing there, bills us out monthly and Summit isn't ready to pay yet, because I do believe there was some chatter that possibly they're not timely in paying, uh, these things right now. I think that that was part of the chatter going on.
Wow.
See if Riley will deposit ten million, I don't know. Nice account.
We can draw.
Mad money.
So we did follow up on that. We did give it to Sunquest. Sunquest does know what some other counties are doing and, uh, he's waiting for direction from us exactly when we want him to start because, uh, he, I think he feels like he'll be working for us, even though we're getting reimbursed, be reimbursed from Sunquest.
Well, he would be in the way it's set up, working for us.
Right.
When we hired him.
Thus comes our budget, I mean, that.
You're the local person that look after our folks.
To be continued again, but I did follow through and give that to Sunquest and, uh, we did have that conversation.
That's still, that was interesting. I don't foresee him having any sleight of the hand stuff that's, they come as, oh, you didn't, you didn't follow step A, B, C, so we're not paying it for them part.
Well, I have.
Although it says the I U B states you will. Although it says the I U B states you will, they, they pay for everything, but.
I like to have that stuff in writing.
Well, that's why I just, so would it be nice to have Riley here? Say these are concerns.
He'll come.
Oh, yeah, Riley don't make coming.
So.
But he's not the one.
But he's not very, I don't think he's ruling all that high up the food chain.
I don't think he's the one that's gonna sign our contract.
Me instead of Riley.
He's not gonna sign the contract, just for the record, and, uh, he may not even know who that person is that's supposed to sign that. And how long will it take for us to get our checks?
Reach out to her.
I can.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll call Sabrina.
All right.
All right.
I'm good.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn in a second.
All right, I'll favor, I, say both, you can say all. Yo, you didn't even, I wanted to say all day.
Of course he does.
All right.
Okay, so almost any morning I can schedule something and you'll be here.
Except for Tuesday mornings, that kind of.
Are you busy?
That's your wire.
Tuesday mornings, we have. Silly girl.
Silly.
I'll make it work for you.
Thanks.
I'm sure you won't keep me too long.
Nope.